I call to order today's meeting of the Boston City Council. My name is Ruthie Luiz Jean and I am the president of the Boston City Council. Viewers can watch the council meeting live on YouTube at boston.gov/city-council-tv. At this time, I ask my colleagues and those in our very packed audience—I love seeing chambers so full—to please silence your phones and all of your electronic devices. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum?
Counselor Durek.
Here.
Counselor Durek.
Here.
Counselor Durek.
Here.
Counselor Fernandez Anderson.
Here.
Counselor Fitzgerald.
Here.
Counselor Flynn.
Here.
Counselor Luiz Jean.
Here.
Counselor Mejia.
Here.
Counselor Murphy.
Here.
Counselor Peppin.
Here.
Counselor Satana.
Here.
Counselor Weber.
Here.
And Counselor Orell.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you. I have been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. At this time, I am going to call up our very own Juan Lopez, who is—today is his last council meeting—and he will also be the one giving us today's invocation. So Juan Lopez, please.
God, it's the best city. And I wanted you to know that this is the first time I'm saying the prayer, but I had always hoped, my mother, that—I wanted to be a priest, and I actually—but God knew best, and my pride is my family, as many of you—and I couldn't be a priest, or in the Catholic faith anyways. My pride is my children and my grandchildren, and I have two great-grandchildren, all, you know, born, and this city has given so much to me. And first, I thank the God Almighty and all of us, and we're doing—and doing this in this blessed city on the hill. My mother taught me and—to always love God and to respect everyone, and that's the key. And it's so fitting, you know, I see this city that I'm so proud of, the city of first, and to see the diversity and the strength that we have because of—this is the true e pluribus unum, to have this woman president out of many. And our country is so amazing, you know, we have people from all over the world, every faith, you know, and in this, we have all the things that should be respected are present here, and every one of you in this council, people, you know, that respect each other's diversity, of Jewish faith, of Catholic, Muslims, and so on. And so we are really in a blessed city. And I just want—God bless our city and continue to bless it, as it has, and it manifests itself through each and every one of you. And I love this great country because of that. And when we say, "God bless America and the rest of the world," and may through friendship and peace and love and understanding and respect for that difference, which you represent so incredibly. And as you know, we live—my mother, they wanted me to be a priest, she had promised me. She had family in both sides when there was a civil war in Cuba, and one of my relatives was a priest and the other one was very much in the revolution. And they were arguing, and she said, "You know, the important things, if you think of the great God, well, he was a communist, because he believed in equality and sharing," you know, the true meaning of communism or community in so ways. But the God is undeniable. I mean, when you look, it's an intelligent design. I mean, you can think of every way, and no matter who, what you believe, or what book, no matter how far you go, it's a common origin. We come from the same tribes, even if you believe in just in science and the guru, the same—the same combinations. And she—and she said, "But the important thing"—when they were arguing, and really, they said, "But you are family, and as long as you respect each other and know that that's the key, then we'll have peace." And she always invoked God. So I do the rolls ree once a month, and in this system of ours, they should be participating in, and the way you love this country is by active participation in democracy, in voting, and making sure that all voices are heard, as we see that has not been the case. And in the capitalist system, my favorite coin is the penny, and I pick it up every time, because it says in it, and I learned this from "In God We Trust." So God bless all of you, God bless this great city, and thank you, Lord, for all of these public servants that we have. It's been my honor to—we are public servants, and I'll continue to serve in the commemoration committee, making sure that it's inclusive and celebrates all of America, and, you know, all the Euro and different things, where we got many other names, but also celebrate Aztecas and Mayas and Indians, Taínos, and so on, because those united tribes would make the world great, and the diversity. So God bless America, God bless this city. Amen.
Don't go too far, Juan, we have more. Thank you so much. I also see Said Abdurahim and you, today is our last meeting of Black History Month. Said, I do want you to come, if you could just come and share a few words, I allow you to do that. And thank you, Counselor Fernandez Anderson, I know that you wanted to give to both space for both Said and Juan today, so thank you. And after Said, we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good afternoon, everyone. Madam Council President, Madam Mary Wu, Counsel Anderson, and all the other counselors, it's an honor and privilege to speak in front of you guys. My name is Said Abdurahim. I have been known as the orange shirt guy throughout the city of Boston. And there's a story behind this orange shirt. When I was first resettled in the city of Boston, a refugee resettlement agency gave me my first shirt in the U.S. in the city of Boston, and it was the color orange. Coming from a war-torn country, this shirt symbolizes opportunity, freedom, and safety. Boston is a city that gave a young immigrant man, a young immigrant boy, the opportunity to get educated, public housing, safety, and health care. It's always an honor to call this great city my home. The first time I decided to run for office, I wanted to be a voice for change, because not only do I stand before you as an immigrant man, but I'm also a black man who lived in four different public housings. I want to congratulate Mayor Wu for doing a wonderful job and trying to tackle some of the tough issues facing our city, in terms of affordable housing, clean energy, quality education, et cetera. Also, you know, I want to congratulate the council members for working with our wonderful mayor to bring these bold changes. It's not really easy to be in politics, because when I ran, I can see how hard it was, and I can only imagine how hard it is for, you know, all of you guys to do your job. A lot of people don't give you credit, you know, I just want to say that, you know, I'm always humbled and appreciative of all the wonderful work you guys are doing. Thank you very much for having me. It's a pleasure to speak in front of all you guys, thank you.
We'll now recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We have a few special presentations today from Counselor Durek and Counselor Coletta, but before that, we have a very, very special presentation for our very own, again, Juan Orellillo Lopez. So if I could please call up our mayor, Mayor Michelle Will.
Where did Juan go?
I told him not to go too far.
So, am I allowed to say what year you first started working in City Hall?
Oh, absolutely.
1978, right? Forty-six years that Juan has been opening doors within City Hall. He not only has been such an inspiration and a mentor for generations of young people coming up through government, he has been a voice outside these walls, also constantly finding ways to connect people to the work that's happening inside. How many of y'all have been on the Política entre amigos show, right? So Juan is the person that helped me feel welcome in this building, and I know I'm one of just thousands of people that—he kind of was that first smiling face and then mentor and guide. He is the person who is the official tour guide whenever groups come in, and he'll take everyone, you know, to see all the different parts of the building, up to see the little model city on the top floor of City Hall, but it's much more than just being a tour guide for the physical spaces within City Hall. He has been that tour guide, he has been that historian and that connector for so many of us who maybe never expected that we could have a future in a space like this where important decisions are being made. So Juan, you have opened the doors for so many, you have been a leader and figure within the Latino community, making sure that every community has a voice, and you have also helped mentor so many of us who are now in our roles only because we felt connected to the education, the sense of belonging, and the community that you've helped create. So I just wanted to offer a reverible for many, many years of distinguished service. And— The official streetside. If my colleagues can please join me for a photo. we'll be able to persuade him to come back.
He's also a leap year baby, and tomorrow's his birthday, so. So it's going to be a little bit of Juan moment, but for forty-six years, you get everything, Juan. I'm going to ask that we take a docket out of order, but before that, I would also like to recognize Youth Build that is with us here today, Ayana Lakes, program manager, a really great organization, national organization out of Rox, but here, their office in Roxbury. We have some Youth Build folks with us in the house today, if you could stand up, we could give you a clap. And a special shout-out to Jalen, who graduated from high school today, so Jalen, congratulations. We are very, very proud of you. Congratulations. Okay, Mr. Clerk, can you please take docket number 0410 out of order?
Docket number 0410, Counsel Luiz Jean and Mejia offer the following. Resolution recognizing February 29th, 2024, as Juan Orellillo Lopez Day in the city of Boston.
Mr. Clerk, could I suspend the rolls and add Counselor Flynn as an original third co-sponsor?
Yes.
Seeing no objection? Seeing no objection, Counselor Flynn, you are so added. I wanted to just say, Juan, you were one of the first friendly faces that I saw when I started just almost three years ago now, and you have been a beacon of light for each and every one of my colleagues, just the knowledge that you have, the administrations that you've worked for, how hard you pushed for Latino culture and representation throughout all the halls, throughout the entire City Hall. I am just grateful that I got to learn from you and that I will continue to learn from you as a member of the Commemoration Commission. I really hope that you are not a stranger to City Hall, because we need to continue learning from you and all the institutional knowledge that you're going to take with you when you leave. But I'm so grateful for you, and I know that my colleagues are as well, and so naming a day in your honor is the very least that we can do, because I know for probably me and for so many of us, you're the ones who taught us how to make those days to honor people here in the city of Boston. So muchas gracias, felicidades, I hope that you have a wonderful retirement, because you deserve it. So I'm just honored that we get to honor you this way, and just thank you so much for your years of service.
Thank you.
I don't know if my co-sponsors and my colleagues would like to speak, but now is an opportunity to do so. The chair recognizes Counsel Mejia, my original co-sponsor. Counsel Mejia, you have the floor.
Madam President.
Sorry. Counsel Mejia, you now have the floor.
Let me speak now. Thank you, Madam President, and I really do appreciate you allowing me to be signed on as an original co-sponsor. Juan, tu sabes como yo siendo la primera mujer hispana aquí elegida en la ciudad de Boston, cuando yo entré into chamber fue tu la manera que tú me recibiste, todo lo que me ha ayudado a entender sobre la política, porque yo entré aquí poco perdida, pero con tu asistencia y tu apoyo y tu consejo de verdadmente crecí aquí como una política, como quien dice, y te quiero dar las gracias a ti por todo lo que tú has hecho, no solamente por mí, pero nuestra comunidad entera, porque tú vives todos los días asegurándose que nuestra gente no se queda atrás. So yo estoy supermente agradecida por eso. Now, y'all probably wondering, I am the official translator in my household, so I will take a quick minute and just translate that, do the abbreviated version of it. I just was uplifting the fact that as the first Latina ever elected on the council, less than four years ago, walking into this chamber, to have someone like you receive me the way that you did, with so much knowledge, wisdom, and guidance, I learned so much about politics through you. I came in here as an activist and through your leadership and guidance and support, you really helped me develop my skill set, and I just appreciate everything that you do, not just for me, but the entire community, particularly Latinos, and making sure that we don't forget who we are and how we show up in this world. So I just want to say thank you for your leadership, thank you for forty-six years of service. Forty-six years of service. And I will end with, I know it was not easy to be Latino then and walk into this City Hall with your accent and your passion and your dedication, and to still stand firm decade after decade, administration after administration, and still stand here forty-six years later. That speaks volumes to who you are, and I hope that you have an amazing retirement, you deserve that, and so much more. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Mejia. The chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and to Counsel Mejia for inviting me to be an original co-sponsor. I've had the privilege to know Juan probably forty years, and know him as a person, but also know him as a dedicated and professional city employee. I wanted to share two stories about Juan during difficult times in the early eighties on race relations. Juan was always there trying to bring the city together, trying to bring neighborhoods together, trying to bring out the best in people, often behind the scenes without any notoriety, even without the office or the title, but there's Juan on Saturdays and Sundays at basketball games between kids from Jamaica Plain and Dorchester and Roxbury and South Boston, doing his part to make Boston a better city. And it's people like Juan and dedicated city employees that don't get the recognition or the fame, but you helped move this city forward because of your compassion, your integrity, your decency, your honesty, and Boston's a better city because of Juan Lopez. Congratulations, my friend.
The chair recognizes Counsel Fernandez Anderson. Counsel Fernandez Anderson, you now have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. I have a lot on the agenda today, so I'll keep it brief. Señor Juan, mi amigo, my partner in our philosophy. I don't want to share too much here, because I have to save the tears for the Harriet Tubman speech and everything else that I have to talk about today, but we're friends, I'm not going anywhere. I don't think I've ever seen the chamber this full for anyone retiring, and it speaks volumes to—how much we love you. Thank you.
The chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, you now have the floor.
So, like my colleague, this is emotional. I will miss you. But it says a lot that Central Staff, Gilavy, Ashley, there's probably more in the crowd. You're very fortunate in life if you meet Juan Juan. Many people aren't that fortunate to meet a person like you. And I'm fortunate to not only work with you, and I consider you a friend, a mentor, a father that I lost many years ago. You're just a wonderful person, and the city will always be better for you, so thank you.
I know Clerk Magistrate Maura Henigan, former city counselor, wanted to say a few words, so Clerk Magistrate, if you'd like to come up.
You know, it is wonderful to be here. I was in this chamber as a member for veinte cuatro años, and I loved it here, and it goes way back to when Counselor Flynn's dad was actually a city councilor, and he sat where Counselor Coletta sat, and I sat where Counselor Durek sat. And Juan Lopez predated me, because he was an intern with former Mayor White. So he was an intern and was doing God's work and the city's work way back then. I came in in 1982 under the former nine-member-at-large body, so it was the last time that that body sat as all-at-large members, and then I came in as a district councilor, and that's when I had my first interaction with Juan Lopez. And he, as he is now, has been an advocate for Latinos, but really for everybody. And he showed me the ropes like he showed Mayor Wu and all of you who have your own stories about Juan Lopez. So he has been doing this for forty-six years. When Ray Flynn left to become the ambassador to the Vatican, because he was the liaison to the Latino community under former Mayor Flynn, I grabbed him as a member of my staff, my personal staff on the city council, and he did such an extraordinary job for me, and since when he joined the Central Staff, has done an extraordinary job for all of you. So I had to be here today to thank him. Dos los bendiga. And thank you, Juan, I love you.
I also see former city councilors Kenzie Bach, Josh Zake, former state rep Jeff Sanchez, I don't know if they wanted to say a few words, but the floor is open if you wanted to say a few words. For anyone else retiring, you might not get the Juan treatment, this is forty-six years of service to the city, so we are going to give him his due.
I'll be very brief. In my time here, Juan and I had in common that we were historians hiding out at the city council, and I think, you know, and that's the thing about Juan, is that he is himself institutional history and memory for this body, but he also just carries this incredible passion for the whole history of the city of Boston, and as someone who was involved in starting it, I'm so excited that he's on the Commemoration Commission, because, you know, I think there's a way of looking at the history of the city where people say, "Oh, well, that's not the history of, you know, my people," or "That's not like our history." But then, as Juan knows, every time you dig into the history of the city, you find, you know, workers fighting to access public space in the eighteen hundreds, you find immigrants who are building out communities and really making Boston their own, going way, way back to the very beginning, and I always loved talking with him about that and just recognizing that, like, that story of people coming to Boston and again and again making it their own is the story of Boston, it's not like a later graft, it's just the whole story the whole way through, and Juan, Juan has lived that here, and it's just so remarkable and incredible, and so even though you're not supposed to make political pitches from the podium in these contexts, I will say on Juan's behalf that, you know, for councilors, when there are opportunities to fund the city archives, when there are opportunities to look for, like, real opportunities for our kids to connect with local history, you know, even preserve paintings, Juan knows there's a famous painting that used to hang here that's sort of gathering dust, and so I'll just say, because it's the thing that I've heard him say so often in these chambers, like, let's make sure that all Bostonians know that that's their history, and we couldn't have had a better steward of that over these many years, so thank you.
Thank you, Madam President, and I want to beg your pardon for my attire. This is the first time I've spoken on this floor without a tie on, because I was not expecting to speak today, but I wanted to be here for Juan, who, you know, I'm not going to repeat what everyone else said, but I certainly and my entire team, when we came in here ten years ago now, as new city councilors, new staffers, leaned on him, just first of all, to get around this building and figure out where everything was, but also on the intricacies of filing of hearing orders, of getting people on payroll, of getting business cards, you know, he was an important guide, and even before that, appearing on his show, Política entre amigos, as I was twenty-nine, first his show, Politica Entre Amigos, as I was 29, first-time candidate, and he invited me on. We had important discussions, helped reach out to the very diverse District 8 communities that I represented. And again, throughout the years, continuing to invite me on the show to talk about not just campaigns, but about what was going on in this chamber, in this building, to make sure that everyone in the city of Boston knew what was going on and had their voices heard. So this is a huge loss for the city, for this body, for institutional knowledge. But Juan, you deserve it. Thank you for everything you've done over the last 46 years. Thank you for what you did for me, the folks I represented, and the people I worked with during my time here. You will be missed.
Hello, everybody. Jeffrey Sanchez. Madam President, thank you for so being so gracious and elegant and inviting me up. I didn't expect this and it's a real honor. I haven't been in this room in a long time. And at the same time, to see this room the way it looks from the first time that I came to this room and look at particular people. I remember my first instance here was back in 1985, when we were protesting the city because they wanted to enact a school change program that the kids, the Yumana, the Mario Yuman at the time was not happy about. And you know who was here? And he did what he did with me, you know, at 15, I'm sorry, at 13 years old, that he has continued to do for these 46 years, which is not only make you feel better, but to make you feel at home, while at the same time being out in the communities and listening to a community that was looking for a voice and bringing it back here. Because there were only a few Latinos here. And at the time in the 80s, when there was a lot of, there were a lot of challenges when the Cuban population exploded here in the early 80s. That ran and they were refugees as well. And they had Fidel Castro saying, I'm sending my worst here. When at the end of the day, the best were coming. And we could say the same about what we see today. And so to be here with Juan, I think about my mother, when my mother was fighting the Housing Authority at a time when the Housing Authority didn't have the leadership that it has today, when the Housing Authority was under receivership. And who was in our living room talking to Kevin White, Mayor Kevin White? Juan and Representative Kevin Fitzgerald and so many others within our own community. And that's what this place is about. This place is all about you and this community and the leadership that all of you enact on a day-to-day basis for the people of the city of Boston. So being here is a truly, truly humbling moment for me, especially for a man that I've seen as an example for me in my life, in my 55 years, to have, be able to stand here and celebrate you. Because things are different now. And let's just say, you helped us get here. So muchas gracias Juan por todo lo que tú has hecho. Juan, estar presente aquí contigo, con nuestras amigas, así como Maura, que estaba era la paraíso. Nosotros pensábamos, ella era la concejal latina de todos nosotros, ¿verdad? Contigo detrás. We say that Maura Henigan was the Latina city councillor way before Julia Mejia met her because Julia carried our voice here for a long, I think Maura had carried our voice here for a long time. So thank you for the opportunity to speak before the council and before the members.
Thank you. And I also know that State Senator Lydia Edwards was here. And I know that she would want to say some words. And I know that there are other folks who would love to be here. But just Juan, I just hope that you feel the love that this building has for you, that we all have for you, past and present. So, Mr. Clerk, I also meant to say that I'm seeking suspension of the rules and passage of this resolution. And I'd like to honor you, Juan, on behalf of the Boston City Council with these flowers. And if I can ask Juan to come up?
Señor Lopez, this is tough. It's been 20 years. I'd like to give you the gavel, not only for your dedication for the city of Boston, but your hard work to this institution and your love. We're going to miss you, señor.
Thank you.
I just want to say very quickly, Madam President, I've had the opportunity to share an office with Juan. And it was, my time with him was really a masterclass on city hall, the city council. And you've really made an impact on me, everybody here, but also hundreds of former staffers and councillors. You're really a living legend and we're going to miss you.
So Juan, in addition to the city council resolution, we have a certificate of special congressional recognition presented to Juan Aurelio Lopez, an acknowledgement of an exemplary career dedicated to uplifting the Hispanic and Latin American community in the Commonwealth, and in recognition of outstanding and invaluable service to the community. This is from Senator Edward J. Markey. So thank you for your performance. And our citation that reads, "The city of Boston declaring February 29, 2024, Juan Aurelio Lopez Day to celebrate your retirement this week after decades of service to our city. Thank you for your dedication, serving under six mayors, working with over four dozen city councillors, and mentoring, teaching, and sharing your knowledge with hundreds of staff and visitors. May this next chapter of life be filled with joy, family, and fulfillment." Thank you, Juan.
Well, I will definitely be around because I love this city. I still serve on a few boards. I'm a Shriner, so I live down, and also Children's Hospital, which is the best. We have best hospitals and so on. And as Councilor Bach said, I'm very much into history and the brotherhood and sisterhood of all the tribus unidas. And you saw we use the Black History Month flag. And I'm honored that I'm working with some folks, it's been around for a while, to Hispanidad, which has all kinds of, and I go into the page, and I'm already doing a lot of presentations. In the number of states, we already have seven that have adopted this. I'll be going to Texas to make a presentation. And basically, it's recognizing that we have to bridge all of that energy, especially here in the Americas. As you see, we have all the issues that we have. We have Estados Unidos, that means united, and Estados Divididos. And you see all the difficulties that we have, even though some have a lot of resources. We're going to make sure that all our children feel pride. And in that commemoration committee, as Councilor Bach was saying, we find all kinds of footsteps that have been taken by Latinos, Latinas, and so on over the years. And there's a lot of ties to the city. One that I'll mention, that we have, Sarmiento, he's from Argentina. And he's in the mall. He's one of the big statues that they have. And he brought public education and education to women in South America. And he came here and loves this city. He's like everybody that comes here loves this city. And he brought a number of teachers from Boston to start that school there and so on. And there's many other ties like that. So, and I'll be, I'll be working on that. So you'll see me. And you know, I always spread that. And that diversity again, the fact that we see here, you know, what the Irish have done, the Italian, the Greek, that every Latino country, you know, in East Boston, you know, Salvadorian, Central America, everyone. And that's what makes our city great. Let's never forget that. And so I'll continue to do that, is to Hispanidad, and it celebrates that, the forging and recognition. The thing that truly makes America great is that forging of unity. And when there is love and respect for one another, that el futuro será nuestro. The future is our. That was the Casique Etaino chief that said that. And it was under very difficult circumstances. And we can see it now. And I'm very, looking around here, you can't imagine how happy I am. When I first came, you can count them on one hand, and many difficulties. There was a busing and all kinds of things. So God bless America and the world, and God bless the city of Boston. And thank you very much.
Mr. Clerk, councillors Louise Jean, Mejia, and Flynn seek suspension of the rules and passage of docket number 0410. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, this docket has passed. We have a few more presentations. I want to invite up Councilor Durkin to do your presentation. And I also just wanted again to say thank you to Mayor Wu, to my colleagues, the central staff, to Farouk from Senator Markey's office, to the former electeds and current electeds for making this remembered special for Juan.
Thank you. I'd like to invite the family of Robert Curran to come up here with me. Ladies and gentlemen, Robert Curran, a son of Ireland, a veteran, a devoted family man, and a pillar of the Mission Hill community, leaves behind a legacy that will forever be remembered with reverence and admiration. Born on September 6, 1948, Robert Curran grew up on the vibrant streets of Mission Hill, surrounded by the love of his family and the camaraderie of his neighborhood. Alongside his four brothers, he forged enduring bonds and cherished memories, particularly on the baseball fields of the Mission Hill Little League. It was here that his passion for teamwork and community first took root, shaping the man he would become. Following his education at Mission Grammar and Mission High Schools, Robert embarked on a journey of service, both at home and abroad. In 1968, he answered the call of duty and bravely served his country in Vietnam. During his time in the military, Robert demonstrated extraordinary courage, earning commendations including the Purple Heart and the Bronze Star for valor. His selflessness and bravery in the face of adversity exemplify the finest traditions of our armed forces. Upon returning to civilian life, Robert continued to serve, this time as a member of the Boston Plasters and Cement Masons Local 534. Over five decades, he lent his skill and expertise to numerous iconic projects across Boston, leaving an indelible mark on the city skyline. His dedication to his craft alongside his unwavering work ethic set a standard of excellence for all who had the privilege of working alongside him. Yet perhaps Robert's most enduring legacy lies in his commitment to his family and his community. And you can see that behind me. In 1978, he found love with Mary Casey, and together they built a home filled with love and laughter on Pontiac Street in Mission Hill. Their union blessed them with five sons and a daughter, whom Robert cherished above all else. His love, his role as a loving husband and devoted father brought him immeasurable joy, and his presence will forever be felt in the hearts of his loved ones. Beyond his family, Robert was a cornerstone of the Mission Hill community, always ready to lend a helping hand or offer a kind word to those in need. Whether coaching Little League, checking in on neighbors during a blizzard, or simply being a steadfast friend, he embodied the true spirit of community. Today, as we mourn the passing of Robert Curran, let us also celebrate his life, a life lived with integrity, compassion, and unwavering dedication to others. May his memory inspire us to strive for excellence in all that we do and to always uphold the values of service and community that he held dear. Therefore, let it be ordered that the Boston City Council honors Robert Curran's legacy, ensuring that his contributions to his community and his country will forever be remembered and cherished. So I'd like to present this on behalf of the Boston City Council to the family. Would anyone from the family like to speak?
On behalf of the family, I really want to thank Councilor Durkin and the rest of the councillors here for this remembrance. My uncle Robert was a good and decent man, served his country well, and gave to the community in many, many ways, including through Mission Hill Little League. The great thing about his legacy, though, is all of these young folks that my father and my uncle Robert cherish so much. So thank you so much, Councilor Durkin, for this great honor to our family. We really appreciate it. And we will cherish this.
Thank you. And I'll just add that though he passed away in November, the council is going to adjourn in his honor today. So thank you so much for his service and thank you for being here.
I'm glad that we could honor the life of Robert Curran and all he meant for the city. So thank you and thank you, Councilor Durkin. Next, we have Councilor Coletta with a presentation.
Thank you so much, Madam President, Louise Jean. I am very, very lucky to have a special guest making their way up to the podium. This person is a public servant whose star is just shining so bright in East Boston. Come on up, Myra. Today, I'm honoring Myra Correa. She is the family and homeless liaison at the Patrick J. Kennedy School in East Boston. So the PJK, just to give a little bit of context for folks, the PJK is labeled as, from the Department of Education, as the highest needs school in my district. 97% of the student population is designated as high needs. 88% of the students there do not speak English as a first language. 81% are identified as low income. Our office, over the last couple months, sought to connect with every family liaison at every school in our district. We wanted to understand how best to support them and advocate for their needs during the budget process, seeing that they are literally the front lines within a school community for families when they were going through some of their most difficult times of their lives. We were struck by the level of compassion, dedication, and commitment shown by Myra in supporting her students and families at the PJK. She cares deeply about her students. She said, and I quote, "These kids are her kids. She will do anything and everything she can to ensure their success." She goes above and beyond for the school community, even if it's not within school days or school hours. If a family calls her, she does everything she can to get them the necessary resources and connect them to folks who can get them resources. When there was a devastating fire that impacted a school family last year in November, I personally saw how fierce she was and how dogged she was in her fight to get them adequate housing, where the city was not doing what they needed to do to connect these families to affordable and stable housing. Myra is reflective of all family liaisons within BPS and a shining example of the type of person we hope will answer our call in a time of need. And so it is my honor to present this citation to you. And if I may, just say it out loud, be it resolved that the Boston City Council extends its congratulations to Myra Correa in recognition of her dedication and commitment to the Boston Public Schools, to her Boston Public School students and their families. Congratulations so much, Myra. Thank you for everything.
Good afternoon. Thank you. Thank you so much for this award. It means so much to me. And I'm truly grateful. Your recognition... Your recognition inspires me to continue to pursue my passion with even greater enthusiasm. I am honored to have received this award and want you to know that I appreciate it more than words can explain. Your acknowledgement of my effort is truly humbling. I want to thank my school and the family engagement team, my family, for all their support. Thank you.
If my colleagues could come up for a photo. And Myra's family members, if you can come up and be part of the photo, too.
Thank you, Counselor.
Mr. Clark, we have one more docket that will be taken out of order to recognize our O'Brien students. So, Mr. Clark, please read docket number 0403.
Docket number 0403, Counselor Fernandez Anderson offered the following: Resolution to honor John D. O'Brien students.
Thank you, Madam President. If it's okay with your permission, I'd like to invite Counselor Mejia to join me up here. Thank you, Counselor Mejia. I'd like to ask if I can have... I'm going to call you Professor, to be funny, but our spectacular calculus, John D. O'Brien teacher, Nefertiti Lawrence. Mr. Goncalves, please join us. Ms. Mosquera, please join us. And Mr. Brown, please join us. All right. Hopefully, we can get the John D. O'Brien students' calculus class to come down here and join us in a minute for our picture. Today, we're gathering here to celebrate the students of the John D. O'Brien Go OB Tigers! My alma mater, it is with great pride and admiration that we come together to recognize the dedication, resilience, and exceptional talent of these students. I would like to extend a warm welcome to Nefertiti Lawrence, a high school calculus teacher at the John D. O'Brien, whose unwavering commitment to her students has left an indelible mark on our community. Nefertiti's passion for teaching and her dedication to the success of her students are truly commendable. Through her guidance and support, she has empowered her students to reach new heights of academic achievement and personal growth. But Nefertiti is not alone in her efforts to shape the lives of our students. I would like to also acknowledge and express the deepest gratitude to all the teachers who are present here today and all the teachers at the O'Brien, and for your tireless education to the education and well-being of our students and the inspiration to all of us. Together, we have created a nurturing, supportive learning environment where our students can thrive and succeed. Today, as we celebrate the achievements of these students, we also celebrate and thank Mayor Wu for deciding to not move the John D. O'Brien to West Roxbury. I think we'd like to thank all of the... On behalf of the council, who voted on the resolution to keep the John D. O'Brien or not move it, to keep it where it is, or to bring it to a black and brown neighborhood so that we can build educational equity or continue to build educational equity. Thank you, dear councilors, for that, for your support and your vote. I'd like to thank the students, the teachers, the families, the parents, the community members, the advocates, the activists, and Counselor Mejia will now read the citation. Thank you.
And before I do, I just really want to acknowledge that in December, our office alongside Counselor Anderson hosted a five-hour hearing to discuss the process in which we went about getting to the fact that they were going to consider moving the O'Brien to West Roxbury, and it was the parents and the students that showed up and demonstrated what power really looked like. So I want to thank the mayor for acknowledging that voice and recognizing that this is what it looks like when we actually include people in the process. So just want to say thank you and a big shout out to all of those who showed up. It was a five-hour hearing, and here we are. Y'all did that. This is an official resolution where it states, "In profound acknowledgment of the extraordinary accomplishments and steadfast dedication to education exhibited by the students of the John D. O'Brien School of Mathematics and Science, we extend a heartfelt welcome to the Boston City Hall. It is with profound honor that we commemorate your inspirational contributions, acknowledging your pivotal role in sculpting the fabric of our esteemed city. Let it be resolved that the Boston City Council extends its best wishes for continued success and that this resolution be dual signed by the president of the City Council and attested in a copy therefore transmitted by the city clerk of the city of Boston." That's just like letting you know that this is official, okay? And I just really want to shout out and thank my colleague, Counselor Anderson, for always creating space and looking at what shared responsibility and leadership looks like. I really do appreciate you allowing me to honor the O'Brien students today.
Madam President, I'm not sure if this is allowed. Can we take a vote now before we hear from our speakers?
Sure.
Thank you. First, would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clark, please add councilors Braden, Coletta, Durkin, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Murphy, Peppin, Santana, Weber, Worrell. Please add the chair. Counselor Fernandez Anderson seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket number 0404. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, sorry. Counselor Fernandez Anderson seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket number 0403. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, this docket has passed. Mr. Clark, will you please do a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket number 0403. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Coletta.
Yes.
Counselor Coletta, yes. Counselor Durkin.
Yes.
Counselor Durkin, yes. Counselor Fernandez Anderson.
Yes.
Counselor Fernandez Anderson, yes. Counselor Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Counselor Fitzgerald, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Louie Jean.
Yes.
Counselor Louie Jean, yes. Counselor Mejia.
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor Peppin.
Yes.
Counselor Peppin, yes. Counselor Santana.
Yes.
Counselor Santana, yes. Counselor Weber.
Yes.
Counselor Weber, yes. And Counselor Worrell.
Yes.
Counselor Worrell, yes. Docket number 0403 has received a unanimous vote in the affirmative.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. And we also had members of the O'Brien Drum Line here last week, and me and fellow alumnus from the OB, Counselor Peppin. It was very awesome to welcome the new drum line. I see Counselor Fitzgerald... Sorry, Counselor Flynn, there's something you'd like to say? Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will be brief. I just wanted to thank Counselor Fernandez Anderson, Counselor Mejia, for that five-hour meeting, and we almost had a unanimous vote. Almost all of our councilors supported not making that move over to West Roxbury. Again, it was the leadership of Counselor Fernandez Anderson and Counselor Mejia in advocating on behalf of the O'Brien School. So I want to say thank you to my colleagues.
If the O'Brien students and my colleagues could join us for a photo while you say a few words. Come on down, you guys. OB! Come on down. Don't be scared. Yeah, you can, yeah. Rem, Rem? All right, so everyone, you guys got a crystal? Squeeze, guys, come on. Go ahead. Okay, I just want to say a few words while we're just kind of getting ourselves together. Counselor President, we'll get them together. Can we hold off the pictures? Yes, she's going to say a few words, so if we could have silence in the chambers while she speaks. Thank you. Silence in the chambers while she speaks. Thank you. I wanted to first and foremost thank you for having us here, and I also wanted to thank you guys for allowing us to witness such an awesome experience. Again, we are from the John D. O'Brien, and these are my students. I am a math teacher, I'm not a history teacher. However, I felt it very important that kids be civically involved and see lawmaking in action. I think it does not take a history teacher to do that. I'm a math teacher, all right? So that was my purpose. I see a couple of my alumnis. I've been at the O'Brien for a very long time. I wasn't there when our wonderful council was there. However, I just wanted to put that out there, so I just have a really, like, two-second speech to say, because I cannot let this moment go without speaking. I would like to take the opportunity to thank Counselor Fernandez Anderson and her staff for graciously hosting students from the John D. O'Brien School of Math and Science. John D. O'Brien's mission of serving the community and supporting children's higher education attainment is exemplified in the work that Counselor Fernandez Anderson does and aligns with her mission to be a community service provider. Counselor Fernandez Anderson is a black woman who is multi-ethnic, multilingual, Cape Verdean... Sorry. Excuse me. Let me just... She resides and has grown up in Roxbury from Cape Verdean islands. She is a proud O'Brien alumni and who shares the love of math, as she is on the chair of Ways and Means Committee. Was... Okay, sorry, was. She is a second-term counselor, and she's a proud woman of Muslim faith as well. February is Black History Month, and Counselor Anderson is an example of black history that should be celebrated 365 days of the year. Her efforts to improve the community has been significant and impactful. Counselor Fernandez Anderson is significant to the communities for so many reasons. To start, she fights for the community and uses her position to create significant change in the district she serves. As a chair, as a former chair, sorry, of Ways and Means Committee, she fights to make sure funds are directed towards improving the community. This can be seen throughout the district. She is at the forefront of the community. I proudly serve with her on several boards and committees and get to see firsthand Counselor Anderson in action and her amazing advocacy on behalf of all people who live in the various communities that make up District 7. So I just wanted to take a moment... Rem, are you here?
Yeah.
...to say thank you, just as a small token from the O'Brien. And just obviously, just say that we will continue to encourage more students from the O'Brien to come and view sessions and be a part of this experience. We are so thankful that you guys are a partner, have and are a partner with us to make change. And again, this is civic action, this civic action, and we really appreciate the experience. Thank you, Counselor. Thank you to my colleagues, thank you to everyone from Myra, our family liaison, to the family of Robert Curran, to our OB students, to Juan Lopez. It's great to always honor those who serve our city and students in our city. So thank you to all of my colleagues for honoring everyone. Now on to the first order of business, which is the approval of the minutes from the meeting of February 14, 2024. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the minutes of the last meeting are approved. We are now on to communications from her honor, the mayor. Mr. Clark, would you please read docket number 0376?
Docket number 0376, message in order, authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $2,232,152 in the form of a grant for the federal fiscal year 24 Title III-C Nutrition Service Program awarded by the United States Department of Health and Human Services, passed through the Mass Executive Office of Elder Affairs, to be administered by the Eighth Strong Commission. The grant will fund nutrition services for older adults in the city of Boston.
Thank you. Docket number 0376 will be referred to the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities. Mr. Clark, would you please read docket number 0377 to 0378?
Docket number 0377, message in order, authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $1,614.20 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year 24 Hazmat Grant awarded by the Massachusetts Department of Fire Services, to be administered by the Fire Department. The grant will fund the needs of the hazardous materials response teams as specified in line item 8324-0000 and 8324-0050 of the Fiscal Year 24 General Appropriation Act. And docket number... Appropriation Act. And docket number 0378, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $1,125,000 in the form of a grant for the Fiscal Year 24 State Training Grant awarded by the Massachusetts Department of Fire Services, to be administered by the Fire Department. The grant will fund the purchase of equipment and supplies and to fund training initiatives for the Boston Training, for the Boston Fire Training Academy to ensure the department remains current in the firefighting services.
Thank you. Dockets number 0377 to 0378 will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Mr. Clark, would you please read docket number 0379 to 0380?
Docket number 0379, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $1,038,243 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year 24 Title III-B Supportive Services awarded by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, passed through the Mass. Executive Office of Elder Affairs, to be administered by the H-Strong Commission. The grant will fund home-based support services for older adults in the City of Boston. Docket number 0380, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $530,999 in the form of a grant for the federal fiscal year 24 Title III-E Family Caregiver Support Program awarded by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, passed through the Mass. Executive Office of Elder Affairs, to be administered by the H-Strong Commission. The grant will fund caregiver services for older adults in the City of Boston.
Thank you. Dockets number 0379 to 0380 will be referred to the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities. Mr. Clark, would you please read docket number 0381?
Docket number 0381, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $500,000 in the form of a grant for the Open Data Curriculum awarded by the Mass. Department of Education, to be administered by the Department of Innovation and Technology. The grant will fund the development of a curriculum that can be used by teachers in the Boston Public Schools, as well as other educational providers that leverage existing open data from the city, state, and federal governments.
Thank you. Docket number 0381 will be referred to the Committee on Education. Mr. Clark, would you please read docket numbers 0382 to 0384?
Docket number 0382, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $461,143 in the form of a grant for fiscal year, for federal fiscal year 24 Title III-A Administration awarded by the United States Department of Health and Human Services, passed through the Mass. Executive Office of Elder Affairs, to be administered by the H-Strong Commission. The grant will fund the cost for administration of Title III programs. Docket number 0383, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $177,271 in the form of a grant for the federal fiscal year 24 Title III Ombudsman Program awarded by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, passed through the Mass. Executive Office of Elder Affairs, to be administered by the H-Strong Commission. The grant will fund consumer protection programs to improve long-term services for older adults in the City of Boston. Docket number 0384, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $150,000 in the form of a grant for the H-Strong Universal Fund awarded by the donor group, to be administered by the H-Strong Commission. The grant will fund senior center programs and services for older adults in Boston.
Thank you. Dockets number 0382 to 0384 will be referred to the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities. Mr. Clark, would you please read docket number 0385?
Docket number 0385, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $100,000 in the form of a grant for the Recycling Dividends Program 23 awarded by the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, to be administered by the Department of Public Works. The grant will fund investment in local programs, including recycling equipment, organics, diversion, outreach, and education, pilot programs, school recycling, toxic reduction, and more.
Thank you. Docket number 0385 will be referred to the Committee on Environmental Justice, Resiliency, and Parks. Mr. Clark, would you please read docket number 0386?
Docket number 0386, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $84,058 in the form of a grant for the federal fiscal year 24 Title III-D Disease Prevention and Health Promotion awarded by the United States Department of Health and Human Services, passed through the Mass. Executive Office of Elder Affairs, to be administered by the H-Strong Commission. The grant will fund services that older adults in Boston, to assist older adults in Boston to prevent illness and manage chronic conditions.
Thank you. Docket number 0386 will be referred to the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities. Mr. Clark, would you please read dockets number 0387 to 0390?
Docket number 0387, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $37,293.99 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year 24 Firefighter Safety Equipment Grant awarded by the Massachusetts Department of Fire Services, to be administered by the Fire Department. The grant will fund the procurement of firefighter safety equipment. Docket number 0388, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $20,000 in the form of a grant for the Simone Foundation Grant awarded by Frank Gar and Elizabeth Simone Foundation, to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund and support the work of the homicide unit. Docket number 0389, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $11,330 in the form of a grant from the Mass. State Police, passed through fiscal year 23 Coverdale Formula Grant awarded by the United States Department of Justice, passed through the Massachusetts State Police Crime Laboratory, to be administered by the Fire Department. The grant will fund preparation and application process for laboratory accreditation. And docket number 0390, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $8,000 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year 23 National Violent Death Reporting System awarded by the Mass. Department of Public Health, to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund data collection by the Bureau of Investigative Services and the Drug Control Unit.
Thank you. Dockets number 0387 to 0390 will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. We are now on to reports of public officers and others. Mr. Clark, would you please read docket number 0391?
Docket number 0391, the constable bond of Ron Cobb having been duly approved by the Collector Treasurer was received.
Thank you. Hearing no objections, docket number 0391 is passed under the usual terms and conditions. Mr. Clark, would you please read dockets number 0392 through 0397?
Docket number 0392, notice was received from the City Clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 relative to action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the City Council at its meeting of February 14, 2024. Docket number 0393, communication was received from the City Clerk of the filing by the Boston Planning and Development Agency regarding proposed minor modification to the Charles Town Urban Renewal Plan, project number Mass.R-55 with respect to parcel X-28B. Docket number 0394, notice was received from the City Clerk in accordance of Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 relative to action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the City Council at its meeting of December 13, 2023. Docket number 0395, notice was received from the City Clerk in accordance of Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 relative to action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the City Council at its meeting of August 9, 2023. Docket number 0396, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Byron Russian as a member of the task force on the study on City of Boston reparations effective immediately. And docket number 0397, communication was received from the City Clerk of the filing by the Boston Planning and Development Agency regarding 90 Cushing Avenue, Chapter 121A Project.
Thank you. Dockets number 0392 to 03, oh, uh, what's that? Yes, dockets number 0392 to through 0397 will be placed on file. We are now on to reports of committees. Mr. Clark, if we may, we will return to this when we are complete, when we've gone through motions, orders, and resolutions. We are now on to matters recently heard for possible action. Mr. Clark, would you please read docket number 0143?
Docket number 0143, message in order that will authorize the Boston Transportation Department to enter into two contracts with terms of up to 10 years to deploy curbside electric vehicle charging stations through a public-private partnership at no cost to the city with a potential for revenue share. BTD has identified two vendors through the public procurement process that offer different models that address the distinct challenges to locate curbside EV charging.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, Counsel Worrell. Counsel Worrell, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee of Ways and Means held a public hearing on docket number 0143 on Tuesday, February 27, 2024. The panelists in attendance were Oliver Sellez Garcia, Green New Deal Director for the City of Boston, and Matthew Warfield, New Mobility Director for the Boston Transportation Department. The counselors in attendance for yesterday's hearings were Counselor Flynn, Coletta, Durkin, and Weber. We also received a letter of absence from Counsel, Madam President Louie Jean. BTD is entering into a three-to-five-year contract with two vendors to expand the availability of EV charging stations with a focus on equitable distribution. This comes after an RFI last summer, which received more than a dozen responses. The power will be supplied underground, which will avoid cables on the street. All charging stations will be located on a publicly-owned curbside areas and will require city approval and community input before the installation of these stations. Currently, no locations have been identified for future charging stations, and the stations will not have public advertising. These agreements offer the option to extend the contracts after the first three-to-five-year period. These contracts state that all costs associated with installation, maintenance, and labor will be the responsibility of the vendors. Once the contracts expire, all EV, all EV charging infrastructure and maintenance will fall under, fall under the ownership of the city. These contracts can be terminated if serious issues occur with the vendor. The timeline for the rollout in the first two years was 50 stations from one vendor and 200 from another vendor. Several councils had lingering questions, and the answer to those questions have been emailed to all counselors. As Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, I recommend moving the listed docket from the committee to the full council and that this, that this grant or docket ought to pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you now have the floor.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. I want to say thank you to the Chair of Ways and Means, Counsel Worrell, for an informative hearing yesterday. I had a list, after the meeting was over, I had a list of about eight questions I sent to the Chair for a response to the administration. The administration did get back to me with the appropriate answers. I know several of my counselors also had questions as well, went to the Chair, and the Chair sent them to the administration, and the administration responded. So again, want to say thank you to the Chair. My concern, Madam Chair, is there was only, there's only four or five counselors at the meeting. This is a complicated issue. There's a lot to this grant. And when it says at no cost to the city, I'm not, I'm not necessarily convinced of that, and it's possibly for a 10-year contract. So I'm going to vote no, or I would ask if we could have a follow-up hearing, because district councils especially, what impact does this have on infrastructure improvements? What impact does it have on parking? What impact does it have on access to persons with disabilities? I still think there's a lot of outstanding issues. I'm asking for more time to give all of my colleagues an opportunity to be at this important meeting, and it does impact every neighborhood across the city, but it especially impacts district councils that will end up responding to a lot of questions from constituents about these issues. And I feel like they should have the opportunity to be at this meeting, engage in the process, and have follow-up questions if they're not comfortable, comfortable with it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counsel Flynn. The Chair recognizes Counsel Mejia. Counsel Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to the Chair. And, you know, a few weeks ago, we had a vote that we had to take on here on the council floor, and it was for $13.3 million, if I remember correctly. And at that point, we were encouraged to go ahead and suspend and pass. And so we've had hearings and we don't, it would be really helpful for us to have a, a sense of, like, norms and, and, like, for us to adopt and embrace, because I just feel like we keep going back and forth. We're doing certain things for some, some things for others. And so it'd be really helpful to me, as a legislative body of this council, for us to really think about how we're going to legislate. And I know, you know, through, through the Chair to my colleague here, you know, I really would appreciate a little bit more consistency in terms of how we're picking and choosing which battles we're going to fight and which ones we're going to send to a second hearing, which one we're going to host a hearing for, and which one, I mean, I just feel like we're going to have to come to terms with the fact that we can't, it's going to be difficult for us to, to continue to function as a body if we are not leading as one. And so I'm just going to encourage all of us to really think about, you know, the Committee on Ways and Means. We're making a lot of decisions here, and we have a lot of different stakeholders. And I think that if there is a process, we should honor it. And people do show up to certain hearings and not others. I know that Counsel Anderson will say, I probably had perfect attendance in all of hers hearings that she held. But I also think that there are certain things that prevent people from showing up, and I don't think that this is the appropriate venue to also utilize to call out folks when they don't show up. So I just want to name that. But I think that we are now at a point in this legislative cycle, we're not even three months in, and I've already seen in this chamber how we're picking and choosing what we're putting on the floor, what we're putting out to committee, and what we're suspending and passing. And so I am asking for a little bit more consistency, and I'm asking my colleagues to hold themselves to some sort of standard so that we are able to function as a body. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Mejia. There was a hearing on this yesterday. There's a committee report, and Counsel Flynn sent in questions. I wasn't able to make the hearing, but I knew that I had questions on EV. Those questions were answered. There's going to be a continued community engagement process. And right now, this is just about entering into the contracts. I do see Counsel Durkin, you have, you have the mic on. You do have the floor.
Thank you so much. And I thank Counsel Worrell for hosting an incredible hearing yesterday. I got many of my questions answered about, about, sort of, like, I think this motion is really just a kickoff, the city being able to engage in two contracts. And we did get a commitment from the administration to engage in further community process with the two vendors. As someone who really cares about EV charging and also has neighbors who reach out to me wanting more opportunities to charge their vehicles and more spots, this is incredibly important to my district. So I'll be voting in support today. And I think, for me, the process has, you know, I'm new to the councils, so, but for me, the process of it going to a hearing, you know, being able to ask those questions that I had, specifically in terms of historic districts and questions specific to my district, I really appreciated that opportunity. But I think this really is a kickoff of an opportunity to, you know, to engage more on this. And I also want to share that the administration did want to speak to EV charging in general, but that was not germane to the hearing. The hearing was really about these two contracts, and I believe that we sufficiently explored that. So I'll be voting in support today. And for our neighbors and folks who want to be able to electrically charge their vehicles, I would urge my colleagues to do the same. their vehicles, I would urge my colleagues to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Durkin, and I also just like to say that, this is my second term, and during the first term, it was up to, and as it is now, it's up to each committee chair to decide what they want to do with the dockets that are in their committee. I resuspended and passed a lot during my first term, uh, a lot of actually, uh, and it really always varied, so it's up to the committee chairs, uh, committee, the, the Chair is seeking acceptance of the committee report, um, and passage of this docket. I'm not sure if the Chair, if there are any, if there's anything else you would like to say.
Thank you, Madam President, and, um, as a district counselor, um, I felt good enough to recommend the passing of this docket, uh, because there's going to be a community process prior to the installation of any EV charging station. So there's going to be opportunity for not only the community to weigh in, but all, you know, district councilors and elected, uh, all at-large councils to weigh in prior to installation. So I feel good to move forward on the vote. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair seeks suspension, uh, the Chair seeks passage of the committee report and passage of docket number zero one four three. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Doubt the vote? Mr. Clerk, will you please do a roll call vote?
Docket number zero one four three, Counselor Braden. Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Coletta. Counselor Coletta, yes. Counselor Durkin. Counselor Durkin, yes. Counselor Fernandez Anderson. Counselor Fernandez Anderson, yes. Counselor Fitzgerald. Counselor Fitzgerald, yes. Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, no. Counselor Louie Jen.
Yes.
Counselor Louie Jen, yes. Counselor Mejia. Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor Murphy. Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor Peppin. Counselor Peppin, yes. Counselor Santana. Counselor Santana, yes. Counselor Weber. Counselor Weber, yes. Counselor Orell. Counselor Orell, yes. Docket number zero one four three has received twelve votes in the affirmative and one in the negative.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Docket number zero one four three has passed. We are now moving on to motions, orders, and resolutions. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number zero three nine eight?
Docket number zero three nine eight, Counselor Santana offered the following. Order for a hearing to explore strategies for developing mixed-income social housing to increase housing access and affordability for all Bostonians.
Thank you. I'm so glad I get to say this. Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Santana. Counselor Santana, you have the floor.
President, I rise for what is officially my inaugural speech. Before I begin, I want to thank community advocates, family, and friends who are here today. I got to connect with some, with some of you before the meeting. For everyone, please know that you have my gratitude and appreciation for your dedication to the City of Boston. I am honored to be a member of this body. It is clear that my colleagues, both city councilors and staff, are each committed to working together to serve Boston residents. And I want to thank the residents of Boston for entrusting me with this sacred honor of serving you as your Boston City Council at large. I'm here to represent all Bostonians, to hear your needs, your challenges, and your aspirations, and I'm here to meet them by working with my colleagues here on the City Council and in administration. And it's in that spirit that I speak today. I want to share stories of a handful of Bostonians who my team and I have spoken with about their experiences with their housing access and affordability. And I want to share a strategy that I believe the council should collectively explore to meet their needs and the needs of all Bostonians. First, a little history. In the nineteen thirties, the federal government created the risk for home loans in each Boston's neighborhood. They assigned grades based on the idea that immigrants, black people, and other people of color should be treated as liabilities, that their presence made investing in a neighborhood riskier. This is called redlining. Through the nineteen fifties and sixties, Boston undertook the demolition of large swaths of our neighborhoods in the name of urban renewal. This destruction displaced thousands of Bostonians in diverse working-class communities and communities of color. These practices created a city segregated by race and income. In nineteen sixty-eight, a group of protesters decided enough was enough. Led by the civil rights icon Mel King, they gathered tents, they gathered tents and makeshift shelters. Then they dragged them out to a gutted south end lot that the government had demolished and planned to rebuild as a parking, as a parking lot for luxury housing. They set up camp and called it Tent City, and they refused to leave until the government agreed to build local, low-cost housing instead. The spirit of the Tent City movement was to knit Boston back together by building communities for people across a range of incomes. Eventually, the protesters won. It took almost twenty years, but by the late eighties, a mixed-income housing complex opened in the Back Bay. Named Tent City Apartments in honor of the protest movement, it provides homes to all income levels, and importantly, the market rate rents to help cover the cost of the apartment with lower rents. And that's where the first Bostonian story I want to share with you today begins. When Tent City opened in the late eighties, Nikki Fortas moved in with her family at the age of twelve. There was a teen center, there was a community space for kids to play, and everybody looked out for each other. For Nikki, the Tent City community became like an extended family. She's lived there ever since. Around a decade ago, Nikki observed residents struggling to advocate for themselves, so she founded a resident alliance to help, to help solve resident issues. And the alliance supports the community by organizing free events to bring residents together across all income levels. Nikki shared that she wants her Tent City family to be housed, to be secure, to be happy. When she gets a call from a resident at three in the morning who's in tears, behind on rent, and facing an eviction case, she never hesitates to jump and figure out a plan to enable them to stay in the community and get the services that they need. Nikki emphasized that we tend to forget that there's a person behind the dollar, and everyone needs an individual approach. Nikki's work with the Resilient Alliance is admirable, and our office is working on how to support more resident alliance in our communities. I also want to acknowledge my colleague, Counselor Weber, for calling for a hearing to discuss the creative programs to ensure tenants facing eviction have access to a lawyer. But much of the need for the Resilient Alliance and eviction lawyers exists because of the underlying problem. Housing in Boston is increasingly unaffordable for most Bostonians. Census data shows that around sixty-five percent of Boston households are renters, and almost fifty-four, fifty-four percent of Boston renters are cost burdened, spending over thirty percent of their income on housing. Two-thirds of Boston households have income below a hundred thousand dollars, and data shows that most renters are cost burdened in every income bracket in that range. Boston's history of redlining has split our neighborhoods apart by income and race, and we see, and we see the results. Neighborhoods redlined in the nineteen thirties still have roughly twice the poverty level, roughly twice the black population, and roughly twice the level of household crowding as the neighborhoods that were not redlined. People in the Back Bay live an average of twenty-three years longer than people in parts of Roxbury just two miles away. This comes down to the vast difference in wealth, and people are held back from building wealth by systems that create financial cliffs. I spoke this week to Mission Hill resident who lives in Mission Main Public Housing. She and her family have lived there for three generations and love the neighborhood. When I asked her if buying a home or trying to build wealth was ever her goal, she responded. Honestly, I've never been able to obtain a job that pays me enough to even consider that. I have my kids that I have to make sure that I feed every week. Of course, it would be nice to leave this world knowing that I left something back to my kids, but I wouldn't even know where to start that process. We need pathways for people to build wealth and improve their circumstances, but our current housing assistance programs often create challenging or impossible financial decisions for our residents. If your income increases enough to stop calling you for a housing program but not enough to afford Boston rents, then, then you're just stuck. To end these financial cliffs, we need new programs that provide a range of housing options for all income levels. And I want to tell you now about Jason Bennett, who currently serves as a district commander in the Baltimore Police Department. Yes, Baltimore, not Boston. Why am I highlighting someone who doesn't live in Boston? Because Jason's story is a story of far too many Bostonians who have had to leave Boston to afford, to afford a life for their families. Jason was born here in Boston and grew up in Lower Roxbury in the Lenox Street Public Housing. He lived here through sixth grade when his family was evicted and became homeless. Families and friends stepped up and took them in, and Jason's mother got a second job and worked day and night to make ends meet. With the support from friends and, and hard work, they were ultimately able to rent their own home. But by high school, Jason and his sister would go days at a time without seeing their mother while she worked nonstop to save money. After years of constant work, she was finally able to buy a home in Matapan with the help of the First Time Home Buyer Program, and Jason's sister still lives there. While his mother was fighting for a stable home, the most impactful, the most impactful experience of Jason's life occurred. Jason's father was on his way home when he was robbed. Unsettled, but thankfully safe, his father called a police officer to file a report, but the police never came. Jason felt that his family deserved better. He felt that his community deserved better, and in that moment, he decided that he could be the change. He could serve his community by becoming a police officer himself. He finished high school and joined the military police as the fastest way to become a police officer. After seven years serving in the military police at home and abroad, Jason, Jason wanted to return home to Boston. He wanted to serve the community that inspired him to become a police officer, but he worried about providing for his family. He knew he'd have to work overtime just to afford a place to live here in Boston. Knowing that experience well from his childhood, he made the hard decision to move back to Baltimore. This is the cost of high housing prices in Boston, the human cost. It costs our community having Jason. This is why Boston needs more housing for all income levels. There's a massive gap between low-income housing and market-rate housing. It is far, it's too far to make the leap, and the path between them is hazardous. The struggle for fam, Jason's family to afford buying a home is not unusual, and it's only getting worse. Seven hundred and twelve thousand dollars was the midpoint of home prices in the Boston Metro as of August. You'd need nearly two hundred thousand dollars in annual income to afford a home at that price. Nearly seventy-five percent of Bostonians can't afford that. More than a quarter of people who already own homes are also cost burdened, spending over thirty percent of their income on housing. So many of our Boston police officers, firefighters, emergency medical responders, nurses, teachers, city workers, young professionals, and many more and more need middle-income housing. Our public and affordable housing residents need pathways to middle-income housing and homeownership. The stakes are high for all of us. Even when your financial situation's in good shape, one unexpected change can make it impossible to afford to stay here in Boston. I grew up in Boston public housing. I believe in the, I believe in public housing as a part of the solution, especially for our most vulnerable residents and families. And we know there's more demand for Boston public housing than we can meet. Some community waiting lists have over a thousand, have over a thousand, as to as many thirteen thousand applicants. It can take over ten years to get a unit in some cases. But there's only so much we can go, we can do through federal money. The federal First Class Amendment limits how many public housing units can get federal funding for. Right now, we're fewer than two thousand nine hundred units away from that limit. That won't be enough to clear a decade-long waiting list. This is where the idea, the new idea comes in. Mixed-income social housing. Social housing is a financially responsible approach to creating homes. It invests its public funds in mixed-income developments. Then it returns the financial benefits back to the public good instead of private profits. Our current public housing treats government funds as an expense. That's a problem, and, and it's not financially sustainable, sustainable. We end up creating units prone not to being taken care of, and public housing residents are stigmatized when living conditions are poor. A South Boston resident in the Mary Ellen McCormick, who I'll not to be named, shared that people tend to look down on public housing residents because they believe they can't go anywhere else or change how they live. She's even heard this from other public housing residents. Carmen has lived in the West Broad Homes Public Housing for fourteen years. She shared that she feels great in her unit and that her life is good, but she lamented that a neighbor wasn't, she, her neighbor has a broken fridge and that the heating isn't working on another neighborhood's apartment. To solve these problems takes money, but federal funds are limited. They can't fill the gap for everyone. Incorporating middle-income and market-rate units can be part of the solution. The income from those units make our public money go further. The income allows better homes with more community benefits, and that income can cover fixing the fridge and heating for Carmen's neighbors. The redevelopment of the Mary Ellen McCormick in South Boston will step in the new, in this direction by incorporating new mixed-income housing. So will, so will the Bunker Hill Housing redevelopment in Charles Town. Social housing goes a step further to create more financial sustainability. Getting technical. Social housing starts by establishing a public fund, like a piggy bank. Then we use money from our piggy bank to build mixed-income housing. Since we have our piggy bank, we don't need an expensive construction loan from a private bank. This saves us a lot of money. Once we build a housing, residents move in and start paying rent. Then we get to use the new housing to get a much lower-cost bank loan, and then, and the loan money and rents go back to our piggy bank so we can do it again and build more housing. This should sound familiar, because it's a lot like not, how nonprofits and private developers build housing. But it sounds revolutionary, because we're used to the government giving away our public funds and public land to private developers. We're used to our public assets being used once and lost. Social housing uses public funds to create public benefits instead of private profits. It treats public funds as an investment, not as an expense. One program we have here in Boston that has some aspect of this approach in this city's acquisition is the Cities Acquisition Opportunity Program, or AOP. The AOP provides funds to acquire and preserve affordable, affordable multifamily housing. Our investments go to mission-driven housing developers, community development corporations, community land trusts, and nonprofit organizations. Our community partners are leading this work, and we could be leaders too. We could pilot social housing by using the AOP or programs like it to lend or grant funds to the Boston Housing Authority to take on modest-scale mixed-income projects. We have so far largely funded AOP with some ARPA, and that money will soon be depleted. So I'm interested in finding opportunities to create a sustainable funding source for the AOP. I want to thank my colleagues, Council President Louie Jen, and Council Fernandez Anderson, and Counselor Braden for calling a hearing on the AOP. I look forward to the discussion, and I hope that we can host a hearing before we tackle the city budget in the next couple of months. Social housing is a long-proven solution for creating high-quality and affordable housing in other countries. It has succeeded in fostering communities that aren't divided by income. City-owned and co-op units are around seventeen percent of housing and, seventy percent of housing and housing, and half of the Vienna housing market. And social housing provides homes for over eighty percent of residents in Singapore. But people have been unsure if it's a feasible approach in the U.S. system that has historically been so dependent on the private investors or federal subsidies. It is possible. We've recently seen it. The local housing authority in Montgomery County, Maryland successfully created hundreds of homes in mixed-income, mixed-use community that opened last year. They did it without needing traditional federal tax credits or funding, and they've already replenished their piggy bank so they can keep doing, and keep doing, and building more housing. They even built a swimming pool for residents. This approach can be transformative for Boston. We need more housing to address Boston, Boston's housing crisis. Private, community, and nonprofit developers can still be part of the solution. Social housing just expands our toolbox. It adds a tool that can over, that can overcome the tendency to create housing splits across the extremes of market rate and low income, and it can enable us to continue creating homes even when market for private developments is low. This is a globally proven idea that's finally gaining attention here in the U.S., along with Montgomery County, Atlanta, Seattle, Colorado. Atlanta, Seattle, Colorado, Hawaii, California, and Rhode Island are exploring or piloting mixed-income social housing programs. And here in Massachusetts, I want to share my support for the Healy District Administration proposal to include a social housing pilot fund in the Massachusetts Affordable Home Act. I also want to acknowledge Representatives Conley, Sabadosa, and Montano, Senator Jalen, and other members of the legislators who have been calling for the social housing. I want to share the story of one last Bostonian. He was born in Dominican Republic and came to Boston with his family when he was just three years old. He grew up in Alex Taylor BHA Public Housing in Mission Hill. He attended Boston Public Schools. He read books in our Boston Public Libraries. He attended and eventually led Mission Hill Youth Programs. That child would not have believed that one day he'd be standing before you as a Boston City Councilor. But because of our community investments, here I am. I am a product of what happens when we come together and invest in our public good. And in that spirit, I humbly ask my council colleagues to come together to explore the success other cities have had in addressing housing access and affordability with mixed-income social housing programs. And to identify ways that we can implement similar programs here to benefit all Bostonian residents. Thank you. Madam President, addressing housing affordability crisis will take all of us in working together. In that spirit, I would like to ask to suspend the rules and add Council President Liu Zhen and Housing Committee Chair Councilor Breeden as original co-sponsors to this docket. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Santana. So getting this other way first. So added as an original co-sponsor. And seeing no objections, Councilor Santana seeks a suspension of Rule 12 to add Councilor Breeden as an original third co-sponsor. And seeing no objections, she's so added. Councilor Santana, congratulations on your maiden speech. That was extremely well done. And I'm just excited that we have so many people on this council who are housing advocates, who care deeply about making sure that housing is affordable. Vienna is the gold standard for what it looks like for us to be living in social housing when we're putting people before profit and realizing housing as a human right. And so I look forward to continuing to have this conversation on the council when it comes to the Fair Cloth Amendment, when it comes to looking at how we're using the Acquisition Opportunity Program, how we're using our own fiscal authority when we're issuing bonds and affordable housing bonds, how we're able to fund this really important and meaningful work. So I just thank you for this offering. You are now unleashed as a new colleague speaking on the floor. And I want to open the floor to any of my other colleagues who want to speak. Councilor Breeden, as a co-sponsor, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And congratulations, Councilor Santana. What an amazing inaugural speech. As the Chair of the Housing Committee, we're ready to roll here. Let's get going. I think you flagged up the model that they have in Vienna that has existed since the 1920s. We are about 100 years behind the times here. And I think mixed-income social housing is absolutely an essential piece of the toolkit that we have to use to try and ensure that everyone has a place to live in the city of Boston. It is a very, very sad situation when city workers and police officers and firefighters and young professionals and so many people, so many of our neighbors in our communities can't afford, really, really under incredible stress, to try and live and stay in the city. So now is the moment. We really have to get all in to see if we can turn this around. So thank you so much for your leadership. And I look forward to an expedited hearing as soon as we can possibly get it on the schedule. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Breeden. The Chair recognizes Councilor Durkin. Councilor Durkin, you now have the floor.
Thank you so much, Council President. I just want to congratulate my colleague, Councilor Santana, on a maiden speech. Your leadership and the way that you lead with heart, the way that you put all of yourself into every single job that you do. And I've seen it over so many years. I'm so excited to call you a colleague. I'm so proud of you. And I am just incredibly moved by your personal experience and what you're bringing to this body. So I'm excited to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Durkin. Councilor Weber, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to congratulate my neighbor here, Councilor Santana. Incredible job today. You know, I don't think it's a coincidence that both of us decided to speak about the need for affordable housing here in Boston. And I look forward to joining you in fighting for housing justice here in the city. You know, it's great to have you off the bench and in the game. You did an incredible job. And I just, I know, I think you made your parents proud today. They're over here in the corner. And I'm happy I could join them in this great moment for you. So thank you.
The Chair recognizes Councilor Peppin, who I know this is not your maiden speech, but I recognize you. You now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to congratulate my hermano, my brother in service, because I know how passionate you are about this topic. And as a BHA kid myself, I look forward to supporting you in everything you do. So congratulations, my brother.
The Chair recognizes Councilor Coletta. Councilor Coletta, you now have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. I just rise to thank my friend, Councilor Henry Santana. How many years ago was it when we were both staffers? And it's just incredible to see you here on this floor. And I am just so proud of you. And I really look forward to not only this conversation, but some of the other conversations that you will lead through this council, as the Chair of Public Safety and all of that. I learned already so much about this new model, even though it might not be a new model or a new tool just by your maiden speech. And it really is tapping into the creativity that we need, quite frankly, to solve for the affordable housing crisis. So just so proud of you and congratulations.
The Chair recognizes Councilor Fernandez Anderson. Councilor Fernandez Anderson, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, our queen. Councilor Santana, welcome officially. And that was an incredible speech. Really thorough and extremely thoughtful. I want to say, as my black brother, I am proud to stand here to serve with you. I'm proud to serve with all of my brothers and sisters here on the council. But really looking forward to getting to know you, really getting to look forward to understand your policy ideas, where do you come from, more of your story. And certainly, super excited about you being here. I just, a heartfelt welcome and congratulations. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Councilor Worrell. Councilor Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. And first, I want to congratulate Councilor Santana for your maiden speech, for not only bringing us to historic, but also the personal side. And then also the prime examples that we see constantly in our community. We all know too many Jason Bennetts. And that's who we're fighting for, right? We're fighting for those individuals that grew up in our neighborhood to make sure that we're providing affordability so they can stay in the community that they love or that they have grown to love. So thank you for your leadership. Look forward to working with you on expanding that AOP program. I think it's a great idea. And just looking forward to your leadership on the council. And you're looking sharp, bro. Looking sharp. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Councilor Mejia. Councilor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. You're absolutely right, Councilor Worrell. Looking sharp there, Hendry. And I love it because I have another fashionista on the council that you and I are going to go tit-for-tat with that. But, nah, seriously.
There are few counselors who can dress on the council, okay? I personally have found that I have my best, you know?
I was just saying on the gender side of things, okay?
Continue, Councilor Mejia.
I know all of y'all, all of y'all. But I just want to say that every time I see Councilor Santana, I'm like, ¡Esa traje! Because I love it. I'm here for all of it. And I'm just so incredibly grateful. Sinceramente, yo lo un poquito en español porque yo sé que tu padre están aquí. Y yo sé el orgullo que ellos se deben sentir que tú estás aquí en esta posición por todo lo que ellos tuvieron que pasar para que tú puedas representarlo a ellos dignamente. Y darse cuenta que todos los sacrificios que ellos han pasado es para que este momento tú tengas la oportunidad de pelear por nuestra gente, abogar por nosotros y de verdadmente dejarte saber que tú no te vas a dejar tirar la puerta para pelear por nuestra gente. So yo estoy super agradecida que tengo otro hermano aquí en el consejo que va a pelear dignamente para el futuro de nosotros. Okay? So I will translate. Don't even clap. You don't even know what I said, Councilor Worrell. But I'm just teasing, y'all. I'm in rare form today, okay? But, y'all, you know what? The thing is, yeah, right? But you know what, President? Chair, Council President, is that oftentimes, we leave so much of ourselves at the door here in this chamber. And I think that, you know, this is such an amazing moment to really recognize the strength that we all bring here to the city council. And Councilor Santana, I'm so incredibly grateful that I have somebody on this council that understands the plight of our people, that you're going to fight for our people and recognize the amazing opportunity that we have to ensure that we leave no one behind. And your storytelling today, you uplifted the voices of everyone. And I want you to know how important that is as a legislator because you didn't make it about you. You made it about those who you are here to represent. And you were their microphone today. So I think more of that is what this council needs. And I'm so incredibly grateful that I'm going to get to see you do just that. So I just want to say thank you and congratulations.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Breeden, Coletta, Durkin, Fernandez Anderson, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Mejia, Murphy, Peppin, Weber, Worrell. This docket, thank you, docket number 0398, will be referred to the Committee on Housing and Community Development. Now, Councilor Santana, I know that you have your people and they came in full force. And Councilor Fernandez Anderson said pictures. So if you'd like your family and your people, I see Los Pargas are here. So if they'd like to come down and take a photo with our colleagues, I'd allow that. Anyone else you'd like to talk to? What do you say? Yeah, the family, the family should come out.
Michelle, we should have the star, though. Star. No. Councilor Santana, it's the star.
Michelle, come on up, come on.
Who is it? After her, Santana, the next one. No. Michelle, come on, come on. Are we good? All smiles, though.
Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0399?
Docket number 0399. Councilor Peppin and Murphy offer the following: A petition for a special law relative to an age waiver for Alex Guzman to join the Boston Police Department.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilor Murphy. Councilor Murphy, you now have the floor.
Thank you. I am rising to speak first for our colleague, Councilor Peppin, the original sponsor on this homeroom petition. He will be sharing, I hope, next week his maiden speech. And he'll be able to speak. But I wanted to share his thoughts first of why he's putting forth this age waiver. I'm submitting this homeroom petition to waive the maximum age requirement for the City of Boston Police Department to appoint Alex Guzman, Chapter 43 of the Acts of 2007. He is a proud resident of Hyde Park since 2007. Alex had had the dream of working in law enforcement, studying in criminal justice in undergrad, and found himself working at the Boston Housing Authority. He is ready to fulfill his dream and with the passing for the civil service exam in March in the support of this council and city. So thank you for putting this forward. I will just add, it seems like the theme for today's council too, about any way we can, in this role, break down barriers, help people, uplift neighbors, which is something Alex definitely wants to do. I know that he served the community at the BHA as a family self-sufficiency coordinator. Many of us may not even know that that's a job in the BHA. We'll have to make sure that we fund it fully for the BHA because these are wonderful. Like earlier when you gave Councilor Coletta the resolution for our family liaisons, these type of jobs, making sure families have someone on site that they know they can share their concerns. And we can not always give a handout, but a hand up. And I feel like that speaks volumes to Alex's, you know, type of person he is. And I look forward to having this hearing that will be placed in the Government Ops Committee. And hopefully, our colleagues will join us to support this when it comes back through the council. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Breeden, Coletta, Durkin, Fernandez Anderson, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Mejia, Santana, Weber, Worrell. Please add the Chair. Thank you. Docket number 0399 will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Mr. Clerk, docket number 0400 has been withdrawn. Mr. Clerk, please read docket number 0401.
Docket number 0401. Councilors Murphy and Flynn offer the following: Order for a resolution calling for Sundays for all.
Yes.
Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Councilor Murphy. Councilor Murphy, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Council President. So we were all present at the State of the City when the mayor announced the wonderful initiative that BPS Sundays would be when the mayor announced the wonderful initiative that BPS Sundays would be extended on the first and second Sunday of each month, the Museum of Fine Arts, the Boston Children's Museum, the Museum of Science, the Institute of Contemporary Art, the Franklin Park Zoo, the Aquarium, all free of charge for all Boston Public School students and up to three of their family members. There are 45,742,000 students enrolled in BPS this year. There are 13,000 Boston children who attend, who attend public charter schools. Nearly 7,000 of our children attend parochial or private schools and there are more than 3,000 Boston children who attend Metco. There's also less than 300, but there are important 273 homeschool students in the city of Boston. Our parochial, Metco charter schools educate many first-generation immigrants and a high percentage of ELL learners. Over 80% of our charter school students are children and young adults of color and over 70% of these students come from low-income households. This is a wonderful opportunity for families who have enrolled in Boston Public Schools, so I do applaud that we started it this way. But I am concerned, along with councillor Flynn, that the deserving students and families, many of them are being left out of this free program. If it's not extended to include all families, regardless of what school their family, for many different reasons, we know families make many different decisions of why, many of them hard decisions, where their children will attend school. I am asking that my colleagues support expanding this initiative. It is using some of the tax dollars from OPER and also some donations from different philanthropies across the city, but I'm hoping that we can extend it to include all of our children across the city of Boston. So I'd like to have councillor Flynn share some of his thoughts on this also before we suspend and pass today. Thank you.
Thank you, the chair recognizes councillor Flynn.
Thank you, madam chair. I want to obviously echo what councillor Murphy highlighted, that the program that Mayor Wu established is excellent. It gives kids from Boston the opportunity to visit world-renowned museums, institutional organizations such as the Children's Museum or the Museum of Science, or many of these arts museums as well. We all support that, but we also know that there are a lot of children throughout the city of Boston that maybe their parent works and sends their child to private schools. Could be at the Cathedral in my neighborhood, in my district in the South End, Cristo Rey in Dorchester, other areas of the city, out in Hyde Park, Matapan, many private schools. But what we are saying is we are on board and we 100% support the mayor's proposal, but we want to open it up to give every child the same opportunity to go to some of these exciting museums. Give them the opportunity to learn, to study, to be with their friends, to be with their guardian or parent and learn about these world-class museums, cultural institutions that we have in our city. And we, we want to ensure that this program gives every child in Boston the opportunity to learn and to be excited about the arts and the culture. Thank you, madam chair.
Thank you. The chair recognizes councillor Durkin, councillor Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you, council president Luise Anne, and I thank the sponsors for originating this, but I will be objecting to a vote today. I thank our institutions for engaging in this pilot program, along with philanthropic interest. But this merits more of a conversation and I'll just say again that it's a pilot and I think that there can be more conversation, but I think we should, I am objecting to a vote today. I don't think that we should vote on this.
Thank you, based on the objection, we will be sending this resolution, order for a resolution to committee. So typically, um... So because of the objection, it sends the order to committee and typically there's no additional conversation, so we'll be sending this docket to committee. Docket number... Thank you councillor Brayden for that recommendation. This, docket number 0401, order for a resolution calling for Sundays for all, will be sent to the Committee on Education. This is a program that was developed in partnership with Boston Public Schools and if there's further expansion, Boston Public Schools will be sent, will be central. So this docket will be sent to the Committee on Education.
Thank you, thank you, madam president. This is something for consideration, for you to consider. As the Chair of Government Accountability, Transparency and Accessibility, I really think that there's an opportunity for us when we're talking about access and we're talking about opportunity, it's something to consider in terms of really who has and who has not and having a conversation within that framework. It's less about the resource and it's really about who has access to it. So I'm just going to, you know, suggest gently that you consider that.
Thank you, thank you. This docket, is it a point of order on a rule councillor Flynn? Okay.
Thank you, madam chair. I just wanted to, I, I agree with councillor, councillor Brayden that this, this docket going into the Pilot Committee makes most, most sense because this is a nonprofit-related issue, especially our museums and cultural institutions that are paying minimum taxes or pilot payment in lieu of taxes. This is a tremendous opportunity to have a robust discussion about this. I, I agree with councillor Brayden's decision. And I, I would ask if we could have a speedy hearing, because as, the longer we wait, the less opportunity there is for poor kids from Boston to attend one of these fine museums, Museum of Science, the children museum. Let's give them the same opportunity as every other family does. Why are they being penalized? We could have a hearing in, in four months, but that's four months of, of children not being able to go to a museum. Let's, let's be fair to their parent or to their guardian as well. Thank you, madam chair.
Thank you councillor Flynn, I was, I will be sending this docket to the Committee on Education. I was at a charter school this morning. I'd love to hear what expansion looks like, but this docket will be going to the Committee on Education. Would anyone else like to add their name? This docket, docket number 0401, will be sent to the Committee on Education. Is it on a rule, because that last one was, okay.
Madam chair, since it is going to the Committee on Education, could we have a speedy hearing on this? What would the rule be? Would it be in seven days or 14 days so we could have a hearing?
Thank you, mister, thank you councillor, that will be up to the discretion of the chair. Mr. Clerk, please read docket number 0402.
Docket number 0402, councillors Murphy and Flynn offer the following: Order for a resolution recognizing and celebrating Irish-American Heritage Month.
The chair recognizes councillor Murphy. Councillor Murphy, you now have the floor.
Thank you, I'd like to suspend the rules and add councillor Brayden as an original co-sponsor.
Seeing no objection, the chair, councillor Murphy seeks suspension of the rules to add councillor Brayden as an original third co-sponsor. Councillor Brayden is so added. Councillor Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you. So, over the last two centuries, Irish immigrants have enriched all aspects of Boston and the nation's history, and generations of Irish-Americans have made great contributions to this city. When Irish immigrants first arrived in Boston, the Great Famine in the 1840s, they were not welcomed and faced many struggles, including poverty, prejudice and discrimination in jobs and housing. In spite of this hardship and challenges they faced, they worked hard at often unsafe, dangerous and low-paying jobs. As the Irish population expanded and new generations were born, Irish-Americans entered into the workforce and helped build the social, economical and industrial engine of America. Many became teachers, firefighters, lawyers, police officers, politicians, construction workers and business owners. And they contributed significantly to the American labor movement, advocating for safe working conditions and fighting against racial discrimination and income inequality. Today, Irish-Americans continue to contribute to our city and country in business, government, politics, religion, the US military, building trades and organized labor. There are five, if I am correct, here on the council. We can only have three as original sponsors, but I do know that councillor Fitzgerald wanted to be one, but once you say your maiden speech, you can hop on sooner onto things. But during this month, we will celebrate and honor the remarkable achievements and contributions of Irish-Americans. Their resiliency and their perseverance, commitment to social and economic justice, strong sense of community and proud immigrant heritage have helped shape our city and our nation's identity and made us a stronger people. I am asking that the Boston City Council recognizes March as Irish-American Heritage Month in the city of Boston, pay tribute to the wonderful contributions of the Irish-American community, and in recognition, we will be holding a flag-raising on March 13th before the council meeting at 11 o'clock and I hope all our colleagues and others join us. Thank you.
Thank you councillor, thank you councillor Murphy. The chair recognizes councillor Flynn, councillor Flynn, you now have the floor.
Thank you, madam, thank you, madam chair, and thank you councillor Murphy and thank you to councillor Brayden as well for the important work you have done, councillor Brayden, in bringing people together across Northern Ireland and across, across the Republic of Ireland, celebrating, celebrating peace and bringing families together, especially during difficult times. I, I wanted to highlight one, one point that was mentioned by councillor Murphy and it's the Great Famine that happened in the 1840s. And it's actually a genocide of what happened to the people of, of Ireland, where they were, where their food and their crops were taken away from them, sold or destroyed, and people died of hunger. People left Ireland to come to America, to come to Boston, New York or Chicago or San Francisco, or up north and into Maine or into Canada. They came over on ships that were called coffin ships because of the horrific conditions that they were subjected to crossing the North Atlantic. And that, and the first, and the port they left from was in Cork, where I visited, where my grandmother left from. And it was called Old, Old Queenstown and now it's called Cove in Castle Town, Barra, in the Barra Peninsula, in Cork. And these, these coffin ships carried families of Irish people to America. Many died along the way from tuberculosis and other sicknesses and diseases. And many times before the ship even came into the port of Boston or the port of New York, they would stop at a nearby island, maybe two miles away from entering Ellis Island or into, into Boston, Boston Harbor, such as Deer Island. And all the dead bodies they had from the ship that were, that died during this voyage, they buried the bodies before the ship would actually come into the ports. They didn't have a proper burial, they didn't have a proper religious burial as well. And I bring that up because the issue of food access and poverty and justice issues has always been an important issue for the Irish. Ensuring people, our immigrant neighbors and every resident of the city and the country has access to clean water and, and food is something that generations of Irish remember because of what their grandparents went through. And many, many of the Irish that came to Boston or New York ended up contracting tuberculosis, as I mentioned, and carried that with them for the rest of their life, including, including my grandfather, who was in a tuberculosis hospital in Matapan for four years. That's where many of the Irish were, were kept, away from their family. But that's the issue I really want to highlight today is the, the food access, social and economic justice. And years ago, it was the Irish not being able to access food or access respect, but let's, let's learn from those lessons and, and welcome new immigrants into our country and ensure when they do come here, that they do have access to food and they are treated fairly, they are treated with respect and dignity. It's about social and economic justice. Thank you, madam chair.
Thank you councillor Flynn, thank you for those personal stories and for your statement that we have a responsibility to welcome the stranger among us, immigrants, migrants, those who are new to our land. And I think that there's a lot of, of, a, a big social justice orientation when it comes to meeting the needs of our immigrants. Think of the Irish organization, RION, that is really helping to work, or Catholic charities that work to really meet the needs of our immigrant community. So thank you councillor Flynn. The chair recognizes, I believe it was councillor Brayden and then councillor Durkin. Councillor Brayden, you now have the floor.
Thank you, madam president, and thank you councillor Murphy and councillor, councillor Flynn for including me as an original co-sponsor on this, recognizing the Irish-American Heritage Month in March. Madam chair, you've already mentioned RION, which is the former, the Irish International Immigration Center, now RION, and we, I went to a presentation yesterday with Concern International, in USA. Concern USA started in 1969 and it's really funny, not funny, it was sort of the tragic circumstances of what was happening in Biafra, in Nigeria, in 1960, in the late 1960s with the war. And as someone mentioned, it was the first televised war that showed this incredible suffering of families and children, starving babies and... I remember my mother saw it on the television and she said, she had to do something and she got to it and we organized a, a barn dance in our farmyard and raised the magnificent sum of 48 pounds to send, to support the humanitarian efforts. But that was a, and that was a humanitarian organization that is now celebrating 55 years. And I think to councillor Flynn's point, the experience of the Irish in the, in the 1840s and the mass migration of people from Ireland, driven out of their homeland by starvation and deliberate exclusion from access to food and sustenance and, and mass, mass clearances of the land. Folks who were going to be dependent on social support, they were packed into ships and sent off to Canada and the United States. I think that experience, communally, that experience has, underpins our sensitivity and our commitment to social justice, to understand the plight of migrants today who have to pick up and leave their homelands under terrible conditions and come to the United States seeking a new life. I was at the Chinese Golden Age Center a few years ago and an elderly gentleman stood up and sang a poem. And basically, it reflects that experience of so many migrants who come here, that this is a great place, but also your heart is still back in your homeland. And I think that's why Irish-Americans are so proud of their Irish... And I think that's why Irish Americans are so proud of their Irish American heritage, that their hearts are still back in the homeland. And so the other thing I want to flag up is, in Northern Ireland, we've had an incredibly violent history through the 1960s until the peace accord was signed on Good Friday in 1998. And the Northern Ireland Assembly is a power-sharing assembly. The First and Second Ministers are equals, even though they're First and Second. And they've had a difficult time sharing power. And recently, they came to an agreement, and with the result that nothing was getting done. And we like the City Council just saying, no, we're not doing anything. We can't agree, so we'll not do anything. So Michelle O'Neill, who is the new First Minister in the Northern Ireland Assembly, is a member of Sinn Féin, and she delivered the most incredible speech at the, when they're getting back on track again and gathering as a legislative body. So there's lots of hope in Ireland, and I just hope that here in Boston and the United States, we can offer hope to those folks who have to leave their own countries and come here as migrants, and remember our heritage and where we came from as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you so much, Counsel Braden. As an immigrant, and as an immigrant from Ireland, we learn and gain so much from your presence on this body. So thank you for sharing that, and thank you for your words and elevating that commitment to social justice. Counsel Durkin, you now have the floor.
Thank you so much. And, you know, moving to Boston almost 10 years ago, I remember coming to the city and realizing that the Irish side of my family had really never been celebrated. I remember like learning all the songs, getting involved in community events that I never really had access to, living in rural and then Atlanta, Georgia. So I'm really honored to stand here today to honor my family, originally from County Mayo in Sligo, but then the rich cultural history that my family had, moving here with nothing. And really, my grandfather, the patriarch of my family, Thomas R. Senior, really holding it down for his family and really delivering for them at a time when no one really had anything. And he would just be, he would be so proud that I was standing here today on the council floor talking about Irish Heritage Month. So thank you to the sponsors, Counsel Flynn and Murphy, for sponsoring this. Please add my name. And thank you to Boston for helping me celebrate the Irish side of my family, which they suffered through a lot, they moved here with nothing, and, but, every little sliver of Boston helps me really celebrate that side of my heritage. So thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Durkin. I just finished rereading a book, Normal People, that is set in Sligo. So it's interesting to know that's where your family comes from. The Chair recognizes Counsel Coletta. Counsel Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President, and thank you to the sponsors. Please add my name. Of course, I'm proud to represent Charlestown, Boston's oldest neighborhood and historically an Irish enclave. While it's kind of far removed, I'm also proud to have Irish lineage, the Hagerdys out of Quincy, which is my grandmother's family, so just shout out to Grandma Helen. Love you. Charlestown has been an Irish landing spot since the Great Hunger, when an influx of Irish immigrants swelled the area's population. Charlestown is colloquially and belovedly known as the Green Square Mile. The Irish Catholic influence is still felt in many aspects of everyday life, despite Charlestown's recent gentrification. Now, last year, I rattled off a bunch of different names of families who are incredible, but this year, I'll refrain from that and just generally thank the many hands and many families who have helped shape Charlestown's history and the entire city of Boston. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Coletta. The Chair recognizes Counsel Mahia. Counsel Mahia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Last year, we hosted, thank you to Counsel Flynn, and on to a delegation from Ireland. And I had, I spoke on the floor then, I had an aha moment because there was so much rich history and heritage that was being shared, and it was one of those moments where I'm like, wow, you know, we're always thinking about immigrants, and we talk about evolution, and so much of the work that the Irish have done here in the city of Boston is laying down the foundation and in many ways paving the pathway for other immigrants to come. So wanted to just uplift that and what I learned last year in that delegation visit. And I also just wanted to say is that yesterday, our office alongside my colleagues hosted the first annual Dominican breakfast, our Independence Breakfast, but I have to say is that it was an inspiration to the St. Patrick's Day breakfast that is hosted every year by the South Boston Senator, Nick Collins, and whoever was before him. And it was also another aha moment for me yesterday because when we're thinking about celebrating rich history and heritage, a lot of things get lost in the sauce, if you will. And so I really want to thank my colleagues for filing this resolution and keeping present the history of the Irish that have come here before us. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Mahia. The Chair recognizes Counsel Fernand Anderson. Counsel Fernand Anderson, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Counsel Murphy, Counsel Flynn, and Counsel Braden for filing this. As we acknowledge the historical struggles by Irish immigrants during the Great Famine, it is crucial that we appreciate the enduring contributions of Irish Americans to the fabric of Boston and our nation. From overcoming adversity to shaping the social economy and industrial landscape, Irish Americans have left an indelible mark on our city's history. Their dedication to justice, community, and cultural enrichment has made Boston a more vibrant and inclusive place. By recognizing Irish American Heritage Month, we not only honor their remarkable achievements, but also celebrate the values of resiliency and community that continue to strengthen our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Fernand Anderson. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their names? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Coletta, Durkin, Fernand Anderson, Fitzgerald, Mahia, Peppin, Santana, Weber, Worrell, and please add the Chair. Counselors Murphy, Flynn, and Braden, seek suspension of the rules and adoption of docket All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, this docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0404?
Docket number 0404, Counselor Fernandez Anderson offered the following: Resolution to formally support the Roxbury District Increment Financing to be utilized in District 7.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Fernand Anderson. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. The District Increment Financing, DIF, as we call it, is an impactful economic tool provided by the Massachusetts State Legislature in MGL Chapter 42-Q through investment in arts and culture, economic development, small businesses, the acquisition of available land, and workforce training. I'll stop there and just narrate briefly why I am asking today for my colleagues to suspend and pass the rules, suspend and pass this resolution. I write to, or I ask you today to, in request for your support and cooperation in suspending and passing the rules to endorse the resolution, this resolution in favor of the Roxbury District Increment Financing Initiative. Again, this is already a law by state, and we already understand how to administer it. Basically, as the state legislature has already provided the legal framework for DIF in MGL Chapter 42-Q, our support aligns with existing state laws. The potential impact of DIF on District 7, especially addressing land acquisition, workforce development, and infrastructure projects, is substantial. Given the economic challenges faced by our residents, particularly in Roxbury, where a significant proportion makes substantially less than the citywide average, this tool can prove instrumental in fostering positive change. DIF does not impose additional taxes, but redirects existing funds to benefit communities dealing with socioeconomic challenges. I urge you to go on record today in supporting Roxbury DIF organization and utilizing District Increment Financing, providing a vital boost to our residents. I'd like to take the time to thank Bridget Wallace, a constituent who is the lead or the executive director for DIF Roxbury. This has already been established organization, again, already a law on the state level, and who, and also thank the Boston Foundation, who has given them a grant to actually begin to execute their program or the DIF in Roxbury. So thank you so much in advance for your vote today. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Fernand Anderson. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Counsel Durkin, you have the floor.
I'd like to thank my colleague for everything that she does, and I'd like to add my name. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Durkin. I also want to just state that I'm, you know, from last year, I think it's really important that we look at District, like at DIFs as a form of revenue and really hyper-local investments that will lead to economic development in our neighborhoods. We had a hearing here, I think we had a hearing that was merged D-7 and D-3. Counsel Baker also being a opponent of DIF, so I think this is important work for us to continue, and also we'll be supporting and adding my name. So would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Braden, Coletta, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Durkin already said, add her name, Mahia, Peppin, Santana, Weber, please add the Chair. Counsel Fernand Anderson, seek suspension of the rules for passage of docket number 0404, and adoption of docket number 0404. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Clerk, please do a roll call vote.
Roll call vote on docket number 0404. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Coletta.
Yes.
Counselor Coletta, yes. Counsel Durkin. Counselor Fernandez Anderson.
Yes.
Counsel Fernandez Anderson, yes. Counsel Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Counsel Fitzgerald, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Louie Zinn.
Yes.
Counsel Louie Zinn, yes. Counsel Mahia.
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel Murphy. Counsel Peppin.
Yes.
Counsel Peppin, yes. Counsel Santana.
Yes.
Counsel Santana, yes. Counsel Weber.
Yes.
Counsel Weber, yes. And Counsel Worrell. Docket number 0404 has received 10 votes in the affirmative.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I just want to give it, some of my colleagues may be around, they just walked out, so I just want to, if anyone wants to come in, I want to give them space.
Madam President, a point of creation question, please. May I, can we go on a brief break? I need a brief break.
Okay. We're in a brief recess. Mr. Clerk, for docket number 0404, will you please record as yeses Counselors Durkin, Murphy, and Worrell? Thank you.
Yes.
We will be taking a docket out of order. Mr. Clerk, if you could please read docket number 0415.
Docket number 0415, Counsel Fitzgerald offered the following: Order for a hearing to discuss the current trauma response, resources in the city of Boston, and the potential for expansion.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Fitzgerald. Counselor, you now have the floor.
Thank you very much, Council President, and thank you to also my family and friends who've stuck around. I paid them to stay, so they're actually getting overtime right now, but I'm thankful that they stayed for as long as they have, and I appreciate you taking me out of order for my maiden speech.
Yes, of course, of course.
When I first began campaigning for this past year, I spoke of one major theme, that of keeping families in Boston, and that when the infrastructure for a city is built around families and their needs, it is to the benefit of all residents of the city. That infrastructure involves housing, schools, jobs, amongst others. But all of these cannot exist without one overlying principle, that we feel safe in these spaces, to feel comfortable and to free up space in our brain from any perceived fear so that we can concentrate on the work to do in front of us, whether that be a spelling bee, putting a cover sheet on your TPS report, or simply making your kids lunch at your own home. Essentially, to keep families in Boston and individuals' mental health around these matters must be prioritized, and safety is our top priority. However, we also know that it is not within our capacity to deter all the issues that burden the realm of public safety. Though I'd like to take this moment to thank our police, fire, EMS, schoolteachers, moms, and many others that help to maintain the safety of those spaces on a daily basis. It's no easy feat. But instances will still arise where a community, a neighborhood, a home, will be negatively impacted due to a breach in safety. And on the morning of January 1st of this year, as I made my way in town for our swearing-in ceremony, I learned of just such an event. At Meeting House Hill just hours earlier, a young man's life was claimed by gunfire, the first murder in Boston of 2024, and in a neighborhood that also held the title of having the last murder of 2023. In the following days, I had conversations with the folks that lived on High Street, some were here earlier today, and they asked me if they could be shown some love, some support, because even with violent crimes down across the city, a trend we will work to continue, there are still some neighborhoods that are not seeing that trend. And as they spoke about the incident, I thought about the profound traumatic outcomes that these folks have to live with going forward, obviously for the families of the victim, but also for the secondary and tertiary victims and their mental health. I heard from the family that lives on the street that now has to think twice every time they walk out of their home, from the individual that found the victim, still shaken from witnessing such an unfortunate sight, from the children who cannot make sense of the incident and the possibility that this could be normalized for them, and from the community as a whole, who felt they did not know where to turn to to work through their feelings. I asked our district attorney, Kevin Hayden, to send some folks from his office to attend the community civic meeting that month, and their presence and their kind and informative words began the process of healing. However, it was clear that these folks still needed so much more. They lamented the fact that they had not received any communication from the city or our neighborhood trauma response team, that there was no one there to flyer the surrounding neighborhood with information about resources, and that there's typically little to no follow-up with the community after such an event. Now, there are some great organizations that do their best to provide these services, such as the Louis D. Brown Peace Institute and the Bowden Street Health Center. But we, as a city, need to do better in providing our constituents with these support systems and not rely solely on nonprofits and other entities in which we cannot have our own oversight and accountability. My hope is that with this hearing, we could shed light on the work of the services we are offering and lend more support to the efforts of our hard-working city workers and esteemed members of the Boston Public Health Commission that tackle these issues on a daily basis. Traumatic experiences, such as the one I described, along with many others, such as domestic abuse, bullying, and the like, carries long-lasting implications. We have all heard the phrase, hurt people, hurt people. And so it is imperative we take it upon ourselves as a city to be there to stop that cycle. And if violent crime is truly trending down, then it should only mean more resources can be concentrated to the fewer instances of when it does occur, so that no community ever feels like they are left with nowhere to turn. And in a specific community of District 3 that has recently been grappling with murder, shootings, teen suicide, and other traumatic experiences, it is all the more important to provide them with the overwhelming resources to not only help them heal, to move on, and to overcome, but more importantly, to demonstrate that overlying principle of public safety, to show that community, that individual, and that family we strive to keep in Boston, that they are loved. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Fitzgerald, for your maiden speech that was... That was incredible, and it's a testament to, uh, why it's important to have people with a number of perspectives. So I want to congratulate you on your maiden speech. You are, you are now unleashed as well. Um, and I think I was at one of those meetings when we were talking about celebrating how the crime rate is down, but that doesn't mean anything to that community that experienced that one murder or that second murder, and so we still have work to do to reinvest those resources where we should be seeing savings as a result of that crime going down and seeing how we work, invest deeply in the work of prevention, um, and responding to people's needs and to their, and to their trauma. So, thank you so much for that, uh, maiden speech. Um, I don't know if any of my, any colleagues would like to speak. Uh, the Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and want to congratulate Counsel Fitzgerald on his maiden speech. Wonderful, wonderful message, important message, but what I, what I wanted to specifically mention is I know your, I know your dad's not here, but your dad would be very proud of you, John. Congratulations.
The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, you now have the floor.
Um, thank you. I'm standing to congratulate my district counselor. Thank you, John. And something that Counsel Flynn noticed too is that your dad's binder that you have, your state envelope, so, yep, your family's here, they love you, but your dad's always going to be with you, so, good luck, I'm here with you. Thank you.
Okay, this room, I feel like you all turned your lights on at the same time, so I'm just going to start here. Counsel Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and congratulations, Counsel Fitzgerald, on your maiden speech. Um, this is an incredibly important topic, and, uh, I think you hit all the points, and, um, we really appreciate your leadership and bringing this forward is an important issue that what you want to focus on in your time, that your, your, your maiden speech indicates something that you care about very deeply and that you're going to work on, so we, we pledge to support you in that. And, uh, as someone who comes from a place that was traumatized by decades of violence, I think one of the things that, the things that happens is when you see the bad news on the television all the time and you hear it in your community, you get desensitized to the human implications of, of violence and loss in your community. So, um, there's, there's a huge amount of work to do to try and do deep healing, because it catches up on you at some stage. Uh, you think you've got, you put it behind you, but then, bang, it's back there. So, um, there's a lot of work to do. Um, I think as a city, as a community, it's, it's very important work that we do address to build a, build a new future for our city that, uh, is free of violence and fear in our neighborhoods. So thank you so much for your leadership.
Thank you, Counsel Braden. Counsel, the Chair now recognizes Counsel Coletta. Counsel Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. Just rising to stay consistent and say congratulations. It's been a joy to witness, um, you operate in this council already, and so I really look forward to seeing your leadership, um, for, for your district, and just know that we are behind you, it's already been said, but just rising to say congratulations, and we look forward to the work with you. Thank you.
Yes. We are here for your leadership and your laughs, so, okay. Uh, Counsel Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Counselor Fitzgerald, for your leadership. Thank you for stepping up and running. I think since the moment I met you, I was like, you're a great person, you can just see it, like, you know, inside and out, and, um, obviously, I have big shoes to fill in Mission Hill, because I can't stop hearing about your dad, like, and I think the only endorsement that, um, I need, the only person I need to bring around with you in my, in Mission Hill is you, so, um, but I, I'm just so honored to, um, to serve with you, and I'm really, um, your focus on mental health in your first speech means that we're going to be doing a lot of work together in our time on the council, um, and, you know, on this council, we all have moments of disagreement, um, but I think we're all here and we're all good people, and we all really want to serve our constituents, and, um, I just, since the moment I met you, I just, I, you're an earnest person, you're a great person, and the fact that this is your maiden speech, it just shows a lot about you and, and where you come from and who you are, so thank you for your leadership.
The Chair recognizes Counsel Fernandez-Anderson. Counsel Fernandez-Anderson, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Just briefly, um, Counsel Fitzgerald, uh, from the moment I met you, uh, what stood out is your personality. You are funny as hell, and, um, but then I think I saw you, I forget what speech you were giving about your family, and I then learned how compassionate you are. You're, you're handsome, you're smart, you're quick, on your feet, and you are a good husband, a good father, and so far, the things that I'm watching you do is, are the very things that I think are representative of a man on a council, um, and I really appreciate you for that. I look forward to learning more, um, and hopefully you live up to those standards. No, I'm kidding. Um, I look forward to getting to know you more, um, and sincerely, like, I just think you have a really, really, really good, uh, big heart, and, um, you're so humble, um, and I just, I'm, I, I feel really honored to be here with you, and each day, every time I see you, I'm watching you, I'm observing, I'm taking notes, because I, I admire you from afar. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the Chair recognizes Counsel Mejia. Counsel Mejia, you have the floor.
Okay, Counsel Anderson, I love that. You, I know, but I love the, okay, I know, okay. I, I know, no, 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 I, I love it, because, you know, Counsel Anderson and I don't give a lot of compliments, so when they come, you know it's true, and, you know, we here for it, so I love it. But, you know what, Counselor Fitzgerald, um, I first, I believe, I don't know, probably have met you before then, but I just remember the first interaction I had with you, you were picking up your nomination papers, and I did not know that you were, I didn't know what you were running for, who you were, I didn't know any of those things, but there was just something about your energy that I was like, okay, okay, get out there, go run for your life here. Um, but then seeing you on the campaign trail, got to know a little bit about you and, you know, sharing the space with you at debates and things of that nature. But it wasn't until I saw you speak at the Cape Verdean Youth, uh, um, meeting, the Public Safety meeting, that I really got to see who you were, because so many times we have people who are politicians and show up with that outfit, and they always play that role, but I was so incredibly, like, in awe when I saw how you connected with those young people, and that was the first signal that I saw, well, at least for me, that you were not just any, any stereotypical politician, right? Like, I really felt that you connected with young people in ways that saw them and affirmed them, um, and that spoke volumes to me, because who you are, when people aren't watching you, is who you really are, and you demonstrated then, because there weren't cameras around, you really demonstrated your ability to really see people and affirm them. And then I saw you again here, um, for the Black History Month celebration, and it was the other time that I saw how you saw people and how you really see them, and you made comments here about affirming folks who come from different parts of the diaspora and immigrants and celebrating Black history and recognizing that not all of us were born here in the city of Boston, but we all love Boston, right? So, I just want to say that there have been very specific moments that I've gotten to see your heart and who you are, and I am so incredibly grateful that you are on this council and that you're going to bring a different sense of sensibility in what it looks like to advocate, and the fact that you chose this issue, regardless of whether or not you're the Chair of this committee, but the fact that you chose something that deeply impacts so many people of color in the city that I represent, because I'm at large, to know that you chose to uplift that as part of your maiden speech speaks volumes to who you're going to be on this council and how you're going to fight for people who have often been unseen, and so I just am grateful to you, and I want to see more of that, and you have such an amazing team, because I see them here all gushing over you right now, and you're only just as good as your staff, and you have an amazing staff that I know that are going to hold you up, um, as you advocate for those that you serve. So congratulations on your maiden speech, and I look forward to being a colleague with you on this council.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Weber. Counsel Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, congratulations, Counsel Fitzgerald, uh, congratulations to you, your staff, and your family. Uh, wonderful job. Also, congratulations on your patience for waiting this long today. Uh, I, you know, uh, thank you for highlighting an important issue. Uh, I thought your speech was like a classic, uh, DJ to bird to perish fast break. It was efficient, effective, and great for the city of Boston, and so, uh, I look forward to working with you.
Funny man to funny man. Uh, okay, the Chair recognizes Counsel Worrell. Counsel Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to Counsel Fitzgerald for your maiden speech, and congratulations. In our conversations, it's clear that you care, uh, not only about the city, but about individual people, um, and then your maiden speeches brings attention to how much you are, uh, compassionate, um, and sympathize with what people are going through in our communities. So I look forward to, uh, working with you on an issue that impacts my neighborhood as well, um, so looking forward to your leadership and looking, looking forward to bringing some solutions to much-needed communities. Thank you.
Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Coletta, Durkin, Fernandez-Anderson, Mejia, Murphy, Peppin, Santana, Weber, Worrell, please add the chair. Thank you. Docket number zero four, one five, will be referred to the Committee on Public Health, Homelessness, and Recovery. We are now going back to the regular order, and we were at docket number zero four, zero five. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, yes, can we do a photo with your family? Yes. Come on up. My dinner, my dinner friend.
Closing the restaurant?
I know.
Oh my God, I'm so sad.
Mr. Clerk, please read docket number zero four, zero five.
Docket number zero four, zero five. Counselor Fernandez-Anderson offered the following. Resolution and recognition and celebration of the great abolitionist Harriet Tubman.
The Chair recognizes Counselor Fernandez-Anderson. Counsel Fernandez-Anderson, you now have the floor.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. For the record, all my brothers here are handsome. Um, to Mr. Anderson, just, don't, don't worry about it, if you're watching. Um, I wanted to dedicate this to, um, all women today, and in closing technically of Black History Month, Black History Month should be celebrated 365 days a year, um, but in closing, I wanted to bring my very, very, very special hero, Harriet Tubman. So I wrote something from you, from, from me to you, from my heart to you. Um, typically, I, you know, we read what our, um, policy people write, which is great, because we all edit and we give it our voice, but today, this is from me to you, and I hope you can appreciate it. Rich sable skin, regal cheekbones, proud forehead, elegant, powerful hands, full lips and electric eyes, that burrow deep in the souls of men, all of this set upon a tiny yet mighty five-foot frame. This is a, this is the vision of an African queen, the composition of a general, the spirit of a liberator, a conductor, as they say, this is what I see and feel when I think about our great American hero, Harriet Tubman. A woman who was once a little girl, bravely a teenager, who risked it all to save herself and her people, and who did it again and again and again. We sit here or stand in this chamber, in our community, and throughout the nation, and we talk about courage. I think about that, and then I imagine what would be possible if we had the will to actually act on such platitudes. Courage. If we could only muster the strength and faith of this enslaved teenage girl, imagine what we could do, what we could accomplish. Miss Tubman is beautiful in all the ways one can be beautiful. She was splendid in her carriage. There was a way in how she moved and maneuvered, whether in a gown or traversing rugged terrain, that made her magnificent to behold. She spoke with elegance and with force. She commanded a room and commanded men. How unfortunate we only call her a spy or a guide or a scout, when the record proves she led soldiers into battle in service of this union. Respect this Black woman, and let's grace her spirit with the love and admiration she deserves. As a country, we owe her so much. The least we can do is see how, is see her for all that and everything she truly is. I thank God that she was able to live a prosperous life. There's a saying that goes, only the good die young, but in this case, the very best of us lived a long life. Harriet Tubman is my hero. Partly because when I think of Miss Tubman, I so clearly see the little old lady in Terraza del Cabo Verde, the little old lady in Haiti, the little old lady in Ireland, their way of gentleness and strength, kindness and obligation, but I also admire how someone so young had the bravery to escape bondage and still found the love, fortitude, and guts to return over and over again to liberate her family and to liberate her friends and strangers alike, some 300 and all. As a person in the struggle, as an advocate or elected official, you always want to believe that you have the mettle to make such choices. Ask yourself, do you have what it takes? Am I capable? Am I willing? Well, Miss Tubman displayed true courage and true inner strength. How kind this woman was, how amazing, how powerful. She did what others only talked about, and I think about Malcolm and Martin and Fred Hampton and Emeka Cabral, I see Harriet, the Titan whose shoulders we all stand upon. And this isn't revisionist history. Amongst her contemporaries, this little lady was a giant. In one of the key events which sparked the flames of the Civil War, when John Brown was preparing his raid on Harpers Ferry in hopes of capturing the federal armory, transporting as many enslaved people to freedom as possible in delivering a fatal blow to that deplorable institution of slavery, he invoked Harriet Tubman's name as inspiration and influence. John Brown zealously sought out Tubman to enlist her talents to aid his plans too. More than just inspiration, he needed her counsel and expertise. Her knowledge as a warrior and strategist was critical, he admired so much, he referred to her as General Tubman, and oftentimes referred to her as a he, in those times as a sign, as a sign of great respect. Perhaps if she was actually there during the raid on Harpers Ferry, Mr. Brown might have been successful and we could have prevented this nation, the calamity and destruction of the American Civil War. Wounds that have yet been, that have yet to be healed. Wounds that have yet been, that have yet to be healed. Frederick Douglass, Martin Delaney, and Boston's very own Louis Hayden, they all loved, admired, and honored Harriet Tubman as a warrior, a prophet, and a queen. We should too. Do you know what else I see when I envision Auntie Tubman? I see you. I see you. I see you. The woman of today, fighting every day, making the sacrifices women compelled to make each and every day, maintaining families without a living wage, forced to give birth in hostile and racist hospital rooms, carrying the burden of multiple jobs, taking care of loved ones and protecting their babies. I see the migrant woman. I see the migrant woman who travel endless miles on foot just to give her child a fair chance at life. The many women who lead politics against the backdrop and vitriol and misogyny and yet keep going. Even when it's hard, you too carry the spirit of Mother Moses. Who should remember Harriet? We should remember Harriet and we need to remember to be kind to one another. We need to hold her close as we wage our battles, as we display our courage. You know, Harriet was known to keep a pistol on her at all times and would never hesitate to use it. Tubman would threaten to shoot any person willing to jeopardize her mission, including an enslaved runaway who would even, who even thought for a second about returning to the plantation and potentially ruining her rescue efforts. Thank God, today, we don't use pistols or bullets, but we have the people and we have the ballot. May God grant us courage, the grace, and the devotion of Harriet Tubman to serve our people as faithfully as she served her own. Thank you. Asking for suspension pass.
Thank you so much, Counselor Fernandez-Anderson. That was beautiful. I cannot hear the story of Harriet without getting teary-eyed and just being mesmerized by how this one woman, this one black woman, this one black disabled woman was able to do so much and whose legacy lives on. And if we have a scintilla of the courage that she had as a woman facing seizure after seizure and uncontrollable headaches as a result of the torture of slavery that she experienced, we would all be better off. So thank you for honoring her during Black History Month, every month, because I do, I do often find myself thinking about what would Harriet do? And knowing that we are her legacy is really incredibly beautiful. So thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? The chair recognizes Counselor Meheer. Counselor Meheer, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, Counselor Anderson, since you've come here onto the council, I feel like I have someone who matches my energy and manages, matches my fight. Because when I heard your speech, I saw so much of Harriet in you too. You might be small, but you're mighty. And I know it is not easy to show up as you are every single day into this chamber, but you do. And you may not have a pistol, but you have a purpose. And so I, you had, I think, a lot of us here in tears. So thank you for bringing your full self here into this chamber when so many of the ways that we show up sometimes gets questioned, but we still keep showing up. So thank you for that. And so, yeah, I just want to rise and thanking you for presenting this resolution, just wanted to add my name to it and to, and to inspire you to continue to bring your purpose and your full self into this chamber, because that's what disruption is really all about. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Chair, Mr. Clark, please add Counselors Calata, Durkin, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Mejia, Murphy, Peppin, Santana, Weber, Worrell, and please add the chair. Counselor Fernandez-Anderson seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket number 0405. All those in favor say aye, all opposed say nay. The ayes have it, this docket has passed, has been adopted. Mr. Clark, docket number 0406 has been withdrawn for later filing. And docket number 0407 has been withdrawn for later filing. Mr. Clark, will you please read docket number 0408?
Docket number 0408, Counselor Flynn offered the following: Resolution recognizing the achievements of black veterans.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, before I begin, could I, could you add my name to docket 0415, please?
Mr. Clark, can you please add Counselor Flynn to docket number 0415?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, this resolution is to recognize black veterans and their incredible contributions and sacrifices to our nation. I was just listening to Counselor Fernandez-Anderson talking about Harriet Tubman and the work she did, really being a veteran as well, a woman veteran. I had the opportunity like many people have to serve in the military and I've seen upfront the incredible contributions black veterans have made to our country, to our city, to the world. And the respect that they don't receive when they come back from active duty service, whether it's in cities like Boston or New York or Chicago or anywhere else. One of the, one of my heroes growing up, many, many of the old, old timers might know him, he certainly passed along now, but Willis Saunders, who was a superintendent of Boston Police Department. I was with Counselor Peppin last week at Mamleau and they were talking about Willis Saunders, who was a black superintendent of the Boston Police, but he was also a Tuskegee Airman as well. Many, many of you see the other older gentleman that comes in here, General Woodhouse as well. Well, Willis Saunders being a Tuskegee Airman, World War II, his, his father was a World War I veteran. We also know about the 54th Regiment that fought during the Civil War. And I know the important work our veterans departments do at the city level, the state level, and the federal level. I know it because I'm interested in that work. I'm an advocate for veterans' issues. But two, two events that really had a dramatic impact on me, even though they were recent events, was two nights ago, I went to an event at the African-American Museum on Joy Street in Beacon Hill to celebrate, it was a panel to celebrate the African-American veterans and listen, really listen to their stories. It was two, two young, young African-American men and an older African-American woman. And several days before that, I was at the Prince Hall in Counselor Worrell's district, I think, and they had the City of Boston Veteran Services held a brunch to recognize African-American veterans. So I got to both events early to listen to the concerns of black veterans. And as I mentioned, I study the VA handbook and I know almost every benefit a veteran is entitled to. And I always prided, prided myself on that, but what I didn't know is the stories of black veterans and how, when they came back, not only the racism, the discrimination, but unique challenges facing them as black veterans. And I wouldn't know that, obviously, because I didn't experience that, but listening closely to black veterans, I have a better understanding. Black veterans after World War II, one of the great ways to generate wealth in your family certainly is homeownership. We talk about that frequently here. One of the biggest federal programs ever was the GI Bill, providing, returning World War II veterans the opportunity to buy a home in a, in a city or a town. Well, for many black veterans, they were discriminated against and discouraged from applying to this program. There are so many other benefits that black veterans are entitled to, no one's giving them anything, they've earned them. But the VA, who I, who I always thought did a great job, especially recently, but the challenges persist for black veterans. I've had excellent medical care at the VA facility in West Roxbury in Jamaica Plain, but black veterans don't enjoy that same level of care that I probably received. So what I'm, what I, I guess what I'm trying to focus on is to try to do more work over the next two years, listening to the struggles and the concerns of black veterans and their families and how their military experience impact them, how it impacted their civilian career and their life, their access to medical care, their access to VA programs that they've earned, that they're entitled to. I believe Seth Moulton, who's a congressman outside of, not sure, Boston, is proposing federal legislation specifically on that, that black veterans that were denied this VA program during World War II, maybe their children didn't serve in the military, but maybe their children should be entitled to some type of Veterans Affairs benefit as it relates to certain benefits that their, their parent or their grandfather wasn't able to participate in. So I, I just want to highlight those reasons and as we approach the budget season, to listen to concerns of all veterans, veterans of color, women veterans, we don't know enough about women veterans across the city, across the country. One woman veteran was saying recently to, to me that the high rates of MST, which is military sexual trauma, is very high in the military, something I didn't necessarily know. But when a woman veteran returns to the United States after active duty, does that woman veteran, when she goes to the VA medical facility, is she greeted with respect? And when she does enter a, into a treatment program, are there other women veterans that are medical providers? And that's a major problem we have in the VA health system. Gender-specific medical, medical care for women veterans is lacking and it's a, it's a challenge for all women veterans, but especially women of color. And as we approach the budget, let's think about some of these veterans and their stories and their struggles, their mental health challenges, their inability to access VA medical care, the impact it had on their children or on their grandchildren or on their great-grandchildren. And let us know that Boston has an exceptional, City of Boston Department of Veteran Services Department and Commissioner, Commissioner Santiago does a tremendous job. We also have a state Department of Veteran Services as well, Secretary Santiago from the South End, same last name, who's a, who's a friend of mine and has, and the Commissioner is a friend of mine. I'm going to DC next week to testify before the disabled American veterans and I do hope to talk about services, programs, and what we're doing in Boston to support our veterans, to support our veterans of color, to support our women veterans. So just wanted to leave, leave that with you, that the work we do here in Boston has an impact on, on the country. That when Boston, when people see us standing up for veterans and military families, it sends a message to other cities and towns that we're not going to forget veterans, we're going to support budgets, we're going to welcome people home with respect and dignity regardless of their color. So I'm proud to support this initiative and I'm going to continue to work on ensuring every veteran is treated with respect and dignity and I would ask my colleagues to join me on this resolution as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for your commitment, Counselor Flynn. The chair recognizes Counselor Durkin. Counselor Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Council President, and thank you to Counselor Flynn for sponsoring this. And one of my favorite constituents is mentioned, so just wanted to give, you know, so General Woody Woodhouse has been incredible and grown to be an incredible friend of mine over the past year. And he's told me a lot of stories about just how many things he's touched in Boston. A founding member of the Black Heritage Trail Committee, which formed the Black Heritage Trail in Beacon Hill. I asked him at some point right around playoffs if he liked the Celtics and he said, I was Bill Russell's attorney. So all the history that, that we know, there's so many, so many things in black history that our black veterans have touched. He told me about getting in trouble at Yale Law School for, for missing class to go to the Supreme Court. They thought, you know, the, the leadership at Yale Law School said, oh, you're, you know, leaving school for a small case. It was Brown versus Board of Education. That's what he was there to, to see. He's just got so much history and I want to just acknowledge the work of the Mission Hill Post in Mission Hill to draw attention to the leaders who have passed away. And also, you know, I just list a couple of these things about General Woody Woodhouse because there's so much black history that can be unveiled when we actually have conversations with black veterans. And I think it's work that often, you know, often doesn't, doesn't get the, you know, it's not about one month a year, it's not about, it's not, it's really just work that needs to be done all of the time. My grandfather also served in the military, but he wasn't honored for that because he was an immigrant. He's, he, you know, spent similar time working on ships and really involved in, but because he had his immigrant status, was never acknowledged for that. So I also want to acknowledge immigrants who sometimes are never acknowledged for the service they do provide, especially black veterans who are, who are not considered veterans because of their lack of status and their immigration. So, thank you. So thank you so much to Council President, I mean, sorry, Council President Louis Shen and also Council President, former Council President Ed Flynn, sorry for the slip-up. Thank you so much for honoring black veterans.
Thank you, Counselor Durkin. The chair recognizes Counselor Fernandez Anderson. Counselor Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor. Now you have the floor.
Thank you, President Louis Shen. Thank you, Counselor Flynn, for filing this and supporting our black veterans, veterans in general. As you all know, I am a proud mother of a U.S. Marine, and I will never get tired of saying that. I'm remembering when I, my son was just about five or six years old, and around six years old, and then I had my second son, and I would buy, you know, it's called a, a jogger, and you would put your baby, it's not a carriage, it's a jogger, and you would jog with your baby. And I would take them, because my kids go to school kind of far away, so I would take them to South Boston Beach and run in the morning at 5:00 AM with the kid in the carriage or in the jogger with my son next to me, and he's six and he can keep up. And because I trained in martial arts for about a good dozen years, I would train my kid in kickboxing as well, in Taekwondo, and we would be outside training and doing all of this stuff. And in every endeavor, when I, if I moved, or if I was fighting, or if I was struggling, or if I was working, there was my son next to me. I would serve as a, in public health for more than 23 years in my career, and then I would, and my son would be there, and he would understand, and he would see how I was doing the work. When he joined the Marines, I asked him, you know, I want to understand, is it the benefits? Did you join because of the benefits? Because your son, your father's also a U.S. Marine? Did you join because of your dad? What, why did you join? Because I want to understand his true intentions. And he turned around to me and looked in my eyes and put his hands on my shoulders and told me, "I joined because you taught me how to serve, and I believe in this and I love my country." And of course, I broke down in that moment because I was expecting GI Bill response or some sort of benefit. But in that moment, my mindset completely connected with him and changed. Here, I was just being a single mom, just struggling, just doing whatever, and there was this kid watching me and, and wanting to serve his country based on watching his mom. I could have never connected the dots in that way, and I respect my son so very much to having a heart to feel, to want to protect your country and your people and to loving this country to an extent to say, "I want to do it because I want to serve my country." I am extremely proud of my son for being a U.S. Marine. I will never want him, I would never want to take that back or take that away from him. And I, again, will never get tired of saying, "I'm a proud mom of a goddamn U.S. Marine." And I will say that over and over and over because you have no idea the sacrifices that it takes. And at 3:00 in the morning, if I'm patching a, a line because of a promotion, he has a gala to go to, or if I'm ironing because I'm helping him, or if I'm driving him to Devonport, it doesn't matter. I do it, and I do it with a smile. If he asks me last minute, I will get up and I, he will say, "Can you please help me?" And I got to get there, and I got to get there in an hour and a half. I will get up in my sleep and I will say, "Yes, dear, absolutely." And that is what it means to be a military mom. Your heart is always heavy, you're always thinking about your son, you're always like, "What if, what if, what if?" And you just have to leave it in the hands of God. And I, again, I'm grateful that, Madam Chair, you allow me to share this. I don't want to keep going on, but just want to share that with you guys in understanding how deeply and profound this is. Thank you, Counselor Flynn, again, for filing this, and of course, I'm going on record in support of this.
Thank you, Counselor Fernandez Anderson. You're a pretty amazing military mom. I want to thank all of my colleagues who've spoken. I want to uplift the incredible work of the Office of Veteran Services and the staff who work there, folks that I've known for quite some time, including a cousin of mine and so, who himself is a Navy veteran. I want to uplift the people that we honored earlier, Lillian O'Neill, an amazing black woman, just an incredible black woman, veteran advocate, Counselor Vice President Worrell, who recognized Colonel Chris Shaw earlier, you know, and as, as Counselor stated, Fernandez Anderson stated, you know, black history is really 365 days a year, and that includes our black veterans. So I want to thank everyone for their words. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Coletta, Durkin, Fernandez Anderson, Fitzgerald, Mejia, Murphy, Peppin, Santana, Weber, Worrell, and please add the chair. Counselor Flynn, seek suspension of the rules and passage of docket, and adoption of docket number 0408. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Mr. Clerk, will you please do a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket number 0408. Counselor Braden, Counselor Coletta.
Yes.
Counselor Coletta, yes. Counselor Durkin.
Yes.
Counselor Durkin, yes. Counselor Fernandez Anderson.
Yes.
Counselor Fernandez Anderson, yes. Counselor Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Counselor Fitzgerald, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Louis Shen.
Yes.
Counselor Louis Shen, yes. Counselor Mejia.
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor Peppin.
Yes.
Counselor Peppin, yes. Counselor Santana.
Yes.
Counselor Santana, yes. Counselor Weber.
Yes.
Counselor Weber, yes. And Counselor Worrell.
Yes.
Counselor Worrell, yes. Docket number 0408 has received 12 votes in the affirmative.
Thank you. Docket number 0408 has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, please read docket number 0409.
Docket number 0409, Counselors Weber and Santana offer the following. Resolution in support of residents, families, and staff at the Edgar P. Benjamin Healthcare Center being impacted by the July 1st, 2024 plan closure.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Weber. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to suspend the rules and add Counselor Durkin as a cosponsor.
Thank you. Counselor Weber seeks suspension of the rules to add Counselor Brad, to add Counselor Durkin as the third original cosponsor. Seeing and hearing no objections, Counselor Durkin is added as the third cosponsor. Counselor Weber, you have the floor.
Okay. I'd like to thank my colleagues for, you know, staying in this meeting for this long and all, recognizing the length of this meeting, I'll try to be as quick as I can. Two weeks ago, residents of the Edgar P. Benjamin Healthcare Center were notified that management was closing the facility in 90 days. The Benjamin sits near the top of Mission Hill on Fisher Avenue. The facility opened in 1927 when it was donated by Edgar Benjamin, the child of a black mother and a Jewish father, who worked as a civil rights lawyer in Boston in the late 1800s and early 1900s. Benjamin donated the facility to the community as a charitable corporation. Following his life's work, the facility, called the Rest Haven at the time, was made specifically to combat and fight racial discrimination and reduce racial inequities in healthcare access. The facility was renamed after Benjamin in 1995, but the inequities it founded to deal with, it was founded to deal with, still exist today, and I rise to support the families and residents of the Benjamin. The Benjamin currently serves 76 elderly and disabled residents who call the facility home and serves primarily people of color. The community has long relied on and looked to the Benjamin as a quality healthcare resource. The situation at the Benjamin, though, appears to have unsettling similarities of what we are seeing with Stewart Healthcare. According to IRS reports, despite experiencing financial difficulty, the salary of the Benjamin CEO was increased over the last few years from $180,000 a year to over $620,000 a year. Meanwhile, the structure of the board of the facility was changed in a way that make, made it look much easier to manipulate. It makes no sense that a facility facing financial difficulties would continue to spend drastically more on their executive and therefore less on its services. It has also been reported that staff members have faced delays in their pay, and when they finally receive their paychecks, those checks bounced. Staff members, however, continue to do their jobs and make sure the residents were well taken care of. Residents of the Benjamin are now scared that they will be left out on the street and are not being reassured by the Benjamin's administrators. The facility has an obligation to find new homes for residents, but residents have not felt taken care of. Administrators have suggested residents go to facilities that are full, and residents are told they need to pay a dollar a page just for a copy of their medical records. The over 300% increase in executive compensation, as well as the lack of clarity being provided to current residents on where they are going to be moved, deserves the attention and focus of both city and state officials. I am glad to be partnering and working with the mayor's office, as well as our state-elected officials, Representative Sam Montano and Senator Liz Miranda, as well as Counselors Henry Santana and Sharon Durkin, who are looking into what options are available to keep the facility open and maintain its existing services. Counselor Santana recently visited with residents and can speak about his conversations with them, but clearly, they have not been treated with the respect and dignity that they deserve. This resolution is focused on supporting the residents and their family members, as well as staff who have made significant sacrifices in support of keeping the Benjamin open. But I do believe that all possible, all possible avenues and options should be on the table to maintain what is a critical healthcare resource for District 6 residents, including state receivership. Please join me in supporting the residence of the Edgar Benjamin Facility and call for its administrators to be more transparent and forthcoming so that the residents are treated properly. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Weber. The Counselor Santana, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm unleashed here, so, and, and thank you to my colleague, Counselor Weber, for offering this resolution. I rise to, I rise to add my support for the residents, the families, and the staff of, at the Benjamin. I visited the Benjamin last week myself. I sat down with the residents and their families. People are shocked by the news of this closure. They want to be able to stay there. They're still trying to process, and they're still, they're very stressed and frustrated. Housing is a human right, that's my main priority, and these are people's homes. 76 people live here. Those residents rely on the programs in the healthcare center. I grew up in Mission Hill. The facility has been a staple in our community. These residents are our community. The Benjamin was the first black-owned and operated nursing care facility in New England. It's more than just a building, it is a beacon of light and hope in the community. If the goal is to create an atmosphere of warmth and trust where residents can maintain a true sense of security and belonging, then how can we abandon our community now? I attended a meeting at the facility last week that, that the management held. The residents, families, and the staff are concerned about the way that the plan close is being handled. They feel that they're not being heard or provided information. Several, several surrounding facilities have no available beds, but residents are being asked to move as early as mid-March. There needs to be more communication from the facility's management to its residents and their families. The staff needs to be, the staff needs more clarity about their jobs, and they need to be more paid, and they need to be paid on time. The staff told me that they're already being paid late and asked to wait to, and have been asked to wait to cash their checks. I ask my colleagues to please join me in supporting this resolution, urging management of the Edgar Benjamin Healthcare Center to improve communications with the residents, their families, and staff regarding the plan closure of July 1st. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Weber. The chair recognizes Counselor Durkin. Counselor Durkin, you now have the floor.
Thank you so much to Counselors Weber and Santana. In December, I got in a very alarming outreach from SEIU 1199, saying, "Counselor Durkin, is there anything you can do to help? I think this is in your district." So at the time, I thought it was, so I reached out. Essentially, caregivers had been unpaid for weeks, and when, that was my first warning sign that something was going down at this facility. But there is a long history here of, of challenges at this facility, and I'm really grateful to my colleagues for their work here. You know, I received, you know, I finally got hold of someone there, and they said, "Oh, by the end of the week, they'll have their checks." And it was heartbreaking. Now, I just want to thank the Office of Immigrant Advancement and those at the city who responded quickly to 1199 along with my office in that moment, and I'm so happy that we have Counselor Weber here now. This is right on the line of our district, so my district is across the street. And it's with a heavy heart that I stand in support of the families and, and staff at, at this, at this facility. I think this and other things happening in our city around Stewart Healthcare and others, like, just show that, like, the city council needs to have an active role. When we see these warning signs, when we get a call from our labor leaders about a certain facility, we need to be on close watch of what's happening. And everyone in this facility deserves a place to go. I look forward to working with Chief Dillon and others at the city to make sure that whatever happens here is equitable and that everyone has a place to go. As someone who, you know, was involved with finding a facility for my grandfather, who is 95 years old, I can say how heavy it is, the people's family experience of trying to find somewhere, finally finding somewhere and, and finding a solution to a problem, and not a problem, but finding a solution to a, a family member who needs somewhere to go. And that unique experience, as someone who's experienced it, I can tell you that I'm approaching this with so much empathy and so much care, and, and I thank my colleagues for doing the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Durkin. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? I'd just like to say that, thank you, everyone, for your advocacy. My office, too, has been working on this issue with 1199 and incorporating it with the Department of Public Health and Senator Miranda, so there's a lot of us who want to work and help to, help the residents and the workers at the Benj, Benjamins. Hopefully, collectively, we can use our power to do just that. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Coletta, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Mejia, Murphy, Peppin, Worrell. Please add the chair. Counselors Weber, Santana, and Durkin seek suspension of the rules and, and adoption of docket number 0409. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Mr. Clerk, will you please do a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket 0409. Counselor Braden, Counselor Coletta.
Yes.
Counselor Coletta, yes. Counselor Durkin.
Yes.
Counselor Durkin, yes. Counselor Fernandez Anderson, Counselor Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Counselor Fitzgerald, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Louis Shen.
Yes.
Counselor Louis Shen, yes. Counsel Mejia.
Yes.
Counsel Mejia, yes. Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel Peppin.
Yes.
Counsel Peppin, yes. Counsel Santana.
Yes.
Counsel Santana, yes. Counsel Weber.
Yes.
Counsel Weber, yes. And Counsel Worrell.
Yes.
Counsel Worrell, yes. Docket number 0409 has received 11 votes in the affirmative.
Thank you. Docket number 0409 has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0411?
Docket number 0411, Counselors Louis Shen and Peppin offer the following. Resolution recognizing February as Transit Equity Month.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Council President Louis Shen. Madam President, the floor is now yours.
Thank you, Counselor Worrell, and I'd like to suspend the rules and add Counsel Weber as an original cosponsor.
Seeking no objection, Counsel Weber is so added as an original cosponsor.
Thank you. This resolution recognizes February, we still have two more days left as Transit Equity Month, and it seeks not only to reinforce our commitment to making public transportation accessible for all, but also seeks to honor the legacy of civil rights icons like Rosa Parks, like Claudette Colvin, who worked really hard to make transit accessible to everyone, including black people in this country. Our efforts towards fare reduction and free bus services signify steps towards bridging the divide in transit access among our communities. Yet the journey towards full equitable transit continues, especially as we aim to connect every resident to vital services and natural spaces. Let this resolution be a signal that the disparities in transit access echo the broader challenges of inequality disproportionately affecting low-income communities, working-class communities, and individuals with disabilities. It's a call to action for us to ensure that public transportation is affordable, reliable, connects people to their, to their communities, jobs, schools, and essential services. There's been so much momentum on this council, and in general, for example, to increase the accessibility and the frequency of the Fremont Line, which is my line, it goes through Dorchester, Mattapan, High Park, and it runs literally in my backyard, which is my favorite sound. And the only regret I have is that I don't hear the train enough, the commuter rail enough, because we need to increase the number of times that it's, that, that it's running in our community so that people can depend on it as a reliable option. So I look forward to continuing to advocating alongside my colleagues for So I look forward to continuing to advocate alongside my colleagues for equity, for fair equity on the Fairmont Line and on all 1A commuter rail stops, and for increasing the frequency. My counsel colleague, Peppin, is my co-sponsor, and he is not yet unleashed, so I will read his statement. "As an advocate for public transportation, transit equity means more than acknowledging the missing routes and aging infrastructure. Transit equity means seeing, embracing, and growing transportation for all members of our communities to have faith that they will arrive to their destination safely and efficiently. I'm thankful to the co-sponsors of this resolution and to work for expanding transportation access in this city." Thank you. And Vice President Worrell, I'll also be seeking suspension and passage. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Weber, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you for adding me as a co-sponsor. Public transportation is key not just to moving people around, but so many of the other priorities that we are all working on. It's linked to many different issues, including climate change, housing, and equity. We talk here about institutional racism. A lot of the decisions made around our transportation structure reflect institutional racism, and we must be proactive in addressing these past wrongs. Increased access to public transportation will help us address the housing crisis. Currently, the city is working on squares and streets, which are geared around creating housing near public transportation. But people won't want to live in that housing without their transportation needs being met. With that in mind, both Councillor Peppin and I both submitted written testimony to make all of Boston Zone 1A, which would make the commuter rail more affordable for residents of Roselandale and West Roxbury, and promote increased use. I support this resolution, and I hope you will as well. Thank you.
Is anyone else looking to speak on the matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Please add Councillor Coletta, Councillor Durkin, Councillor Fitzgerald, Councillor Flynn, Councillor Mejia, Councillor Santana, and please add Councillor Worrell. Council President Louie Jean is seeking suspension of the rules and the adoption of Docket Number 0411. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Clerk, please do a roll call vote.
Roll call vote on Docket Number 0411. Councillor Braden. Councillor Coletta.
Yes.
Councillor Coletta, yes. Councillor Durkin.
Yes.
Councillor Durkin, yes. Councillor Fernandez Anderson. Councillor Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Councillor Fitzgerald, yes. Councillor Flynn.
Yes.
Councillor Flynn, yes. Councillor Louie Jean.
Yes.
Councillor Louie Jean, yes. Councillor Mejia.
Yes.
Councillor Mejia, yes. Councillor Murphy.
Yes.
Councillor Peppin.
Yes.
Councillor Peppin, yes. Councillor Santana.
Yes.
Councillor Santana, yes. Councillor Weber.
Yes.
Councillor Weber, yes. And Councillor Worrell.
Yes.
Councillor Worrell, yes. Docket Number 0411 has received 10 votes in the affirmative.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Docket Number 0411 has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, would you please read Docket Number 0412?
Docket Number 0412, Councillor Louie Jean offer the following: Resolution declaring March 2nd, 2024 as Burna Boy Day in the City of Boston.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Chair recognizes Council President Louie Jean. Madam President, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Clerk, for that wonderful pronunciation of Burna Boy. I rise for this resolution. Singer and songwriter Demini Ebunoluwa Ogulu, known professionally as Burna Boy, was born and raised in Port Harcourt River State, Nigeria, and is now a global cultural icon who has helped introduce and popularize Afro beats to the entire world. He was here two years ago at the Pavilion, and I have been to a lot of concerts and very few concerts like that. For too long, mainstream music has ignored the continent of Africa in terms of what it's producing and its music. And now, when you turn on popular radio, you will hear within an hour an Afro beat song, and that is a large part in due to Burna Boy helping to popularize Afro beats around the country. He truly embraces his Nigerian and African identity, infusing it with contemporary sounds to create music that resonates with audiences worldwide, thereby challenging stereotypes about African artistry and opening doors for aspiring artists from similar backgrounds. Burna Boy will be performing in Boston this Saturday, and so this is to honor him. Councillor Braden mentioned something earlier, that a war, Biafo War, which really helped tour Nigeria apart in the 1970s, early 1970s, and so much of Burna Boy's music leans into really the political struggle and the narrative and Nigerian identity and about bringing people together. So it's my honor to introduce this resolution, naming March 2nd, 2024 as Burna Boy Day in the City of Boston. Nigeria is the largest source of African immigration in the United States and Massachusetts is one of the top 10 states with the highest Nigerian-born population, according to American Community Survey earlier, I think it was last year at this point. We honor Nigerian Independence Day. We've been to, a number of us attend events that the Igbo community invites us to, that the Yoruba community invites us to. The Nigerian community is here and is strong and is present at the Burna Boy concerts. And so I just offer this resolution for us, City of Boston, to welcome Burna Boy and to call March 2nd Burna Boy Day. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Awesome. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? I would just say this, Madam President, if you need backup to present him with the citation, I am available, but also, not only the airways...
He actually has a song called "Unavailable," so it's very funny.
But not only the airways, but also the dance floor. I remember when it was just dance hall reggae music that took over the dance floor, but now it's Afro beats. So thank you, Councillor Louie Jean, for bringing that to the council. Would anyone like to add their name? Please add Councillor Coletta, Councillor Durkin, Councillor Fitzgerald, Councillor Flynn, Councillor Murphy, Councillor Peppin, Councillor Santana, Councillor Weber, and please add Councillor Worrell. Council President Louie Jean seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of Docket Number 0412. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Clerk, please do a roll call vote.
Roll call vote on Docket Number 0412. Councillor Braden. Councillor Coletta.
Yes.
Councillor Coletta, yes. Councillor Durkin.
Yes.
Councillor Durkin, yes. Councillor Fernandez Anderson. Councillor Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Councillor Fitzgerald, yes. Councillor Flynn.
Yes.
Councillor Flynn, yes. Councillor Louie Jean.
Yes.
Councillor Louie Jean, yes. Councillor Mejia.
Yes.
Councillor Murphy.
Yes.
Councillor Murphy, yes. Councillor Peppin.
Yes.
Councillor Peppin, yes. Councillor Santana.
Yes.
Councillor Santana, yes. Councillor Weber.
Yes.
Councillor Weber, yes. And Councillor Worrell.
Yes.
Councillor Worrell, yes. Docket Number 0412 has received 10 votes in the affirmative.
Thank you. Docket Number 0412 has been adopted.
Mr. Clerk, please read Docket Number 0413.
Docket Number 0413, Councillor Murphy offer the following: Order for a hearing to discuss the results of last year's youth summer jobs programs and prepare for this summer.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councillor Murphy. Councillor Murphy, you now have the floor.
Thank you. Clerk, could you please add me in the affirmative to Docket 0411 before I speak on this docket, please? Thank you. Sorry for that. Thank you, Council President. I held this hearing last year and want to continue to be proactive and to make sure that we are using our resources and ways for us as district councils and at-large councilors to make sure that our children in the City of Boston are taking advantage of these jobs, which are wonderful opportunities. The city, through the Department of Youth Engagement and Employment Success Link Program, offered approximately 7,000 opportunities to our youth last year, paid jobs. The commitment to providing employment during the summer months to our youth is crucial for strong families and communities. Summer jobs promote confidence, skill-building, networking, self-management, relationship skills, responsible decision-making, and, for many, and if not all, income, which is so important. I know myself, Councillor Worrell, and others, I'm not sure who else, I think Councillor Flynn maybe also hosted a few, and I hope we all signed up to take on a few youth in our offices this summer. It was a wonderful opportunity for the several students who were in our office. Unfortunately, though, due to many different blocks, I would say, that we talked to the different departments last year, not all of these jobs go filled, despite the fact that there are so many youth and families looking for employment. Not always do these children have the right paperwork in order or the ability to make sure that we can help get them through the process. Just uploading their working papers or getting a hold of their immunizations or any other types of documents that are needed, I think we want to continue to help support that. So I'm hoping that we all come to this hearing to get some good ideas and hear from the department of how we can proactively support this program going forward. So I'm looking forward to the hearing, and thank you, Council.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? I'd just say that, you know, to my new colleagues, I really do hope that you encourage you to take some... We had two in our office. They're really incredible and wonderful, and I want to really commend the administration. I think last year, we had more jobs than ever, more kids placing jobs than ever, which is a real testament to making sure that our kids are able to learn and earn and really find their place and footing in this city. I had my first job when I was 14 years old, thanks to programs like our summer job program here. So I just want to thank that. Councillor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say thank you to Councillor Murphy for offering this today. I please add my name, Madam Chair, and I think providing summer youth employment is critical. Young people deserve an opportunity to learn, to earn a decent wage, to contribute to the neighborhoods, contribute to the city. But we want to ensure that our young people have the best opportunities and experiences as possible, and one of those ways is a paid job where they're contributing and making a difference here in the City of Boston. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councillor Flynn. And I also just wanted to shout out the Mayor's Youth Summit, where there were folks on hand to really help our young people, expose them to the jobs that are available. And when I was growing up, the Mayor's Youth Summit was everything. It was... And so it was really great to be back there as an elected capacity, because so much of the work that we do is about our future generations. Councillor Weber, you have the floor.
Well, I just want to thank Councillor Murphy for bringing this. My son participated in the youth job program last summer, between his sophomore and junior years of high school, as a BPS student. And in my work representing police officers, I've often been told that the best way to combat violence among youths is to get them into job programs, and, you know, so I fully support it. I don't know what the... Whether you requested a committee, I am the Chair of the Labor Workforce, so I'd be happy to take it, but it's... This is... I'm just offering, so...
We're working together.
Okay, yeah, that would be good for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Weber, and you are absolutely correct, right? That the way that we make sure that our young people are learning and engaging in activity, that we want them, right? So that we don't have to worry so much about the trauma response, is by investing in those jobs for our young people. So thank you. Councillor Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Councillor Murphy, for bringing this resolution or hearing order to the floor. Over the summer, we took on about 10 or maybe 13 different interns.
Yeah, your office was teeming with...
I can't say no. It's all about the young people and making sure that they have something to do over the summer. And also going to Northeastern through the COOP program, I know firsthand on the benefits that internships have. But also, I just give a big shout out to the intern that we have in our office now through Crystal Ray, and just giving a plug to, you know, anyone who was looking to take on an intern during the school year. Crystal Ray has a great program, and they send one of their students two times, one day out of the week, to the office for a full day. So I just want to give a big shout out to the intern in my office and also to Crystal Ray for making sure that they prioritize internships during the school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Worrell. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councillors Coletta, Durkin, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Peppin, Santana, Weber, Worrell, and please add the Chair. Docket Number 0413 will be referred to the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities. Mr. Clerk, would you please read Docket Number 0414?
Docket Number 0414, Councillor Santana offer the following: Order for a hearing to explore programs the City of Boston offers or could establish to prevent illegal discrimination by landlords and real estate brokers against prospective tenants utilizing housing choice vouchers.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councillor Santana. Councillor Santana, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to suspend Rule 12 and add Councillor Weber and Council President Louie Jean as original co-sponsors.
Seeing no objection, Councillor Weber is so added. And seeing no objection, the Chair... Councillor Santana seeks suspension of the rules to add Council President Louie Jean as an original co-sponsor. Council President Louie Jean is so added. Councillor Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Housing voucher discrimination is illegal in Boston and Massachusetts, yet evidence continues to show its widespread problem, and we shouldn't accept that. Housing choice vouchers cover the difference between what a renter can afford and the market rate for an apartment or a house. Residents pay 30% to 40% of their incomes towards rent, and the vouchers pay the rest of the market rate rent directly to the landlord. Over 90,000 households in Massachusetts benefit from the federal housing choice voucher program. Most of those 90,000 households are seniors, children, or people with disabilities. Massachusetts also offers a program that works in conjunction with the federal program. It's actually the largest state-funded rental assistance program in the country, and it assists approximately 10,000 households. Rental assistance has been proven highly effective at ending family homelessness. A HUT study of families living in shelters found only 22% of voucher recipients experienced homelessness again within 18 months. 22% was a huge reduction by comparison to the 50% for continuing shelter, 40% for rapid rehousing, and 42% for transitional housing. Excuse me. Housing choice vouchers are supposed to allow people to choose a place to rent in any neighborhood, including affluent or mixed-income neighborhoods that many low-income people would otherwise be unable to afford. Yet, current and long-lasting concerns have been raised that discrimination against voucher holders is occurring here in the City of Boston. Perspective tenants with housing vouchers each reach out to landlords or brokers and are ignored or directly told that they can't use a voucher. This is illegal, but we've heard this is happening from voucher holders. We've heard it's happening from the Boston Housing Authority. And just last week, the Housing Rights Initiative filed a lawsuit against 20 Boston-area landlords who they found evidence are discriminating. In fact, a 2020 Suffolk Law study found that voucher discrimination is rampant. They found discrimination in 86% of tests with housing providers in the greater Boston. This discrimination makes it a struggle for voucher holders to find a home to rent so renters don't get access to all neighborhoods. A 2016 study of the Boston Housing Authority data found that 76% of Boston-area voucher recipients live in lower-opportunity neighborhoods. I think we can add and should do something about this. I'm calling for a hearing to explore programs the City of Boston offers or could establish to prevent illegal discrimination by landlords and real estate brokers against tenants who are utilizing housing choice vouchers here in Boston. I hope my colleagues will join me for this hearing so we can identify solutions to this problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Santana. The Chair recognizes Councillor Weber. Councillor Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I want to thank Councillor Santana for filing this hearing order. Voucher discrimination is illegal and unacceptable. It was disturbing to hear of the lawsuit that Housing Rights Initiative was able to initiate in Suffolk Superior Court. I'm looking forward to this hearing to further discuss ways the city can help prevent housing discrimination against our most vulnerable renters. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councillor Weber. And I'll just state that again, I also want to thank the Counselors Santana for filing. Want to thank the Housing Rights Initiative and lawyers for civil rights on their work here. You know, last council cycle, we, my office, fought for more housing testers, which is really the gold standard, which is pair testing to prevent housing discrimination. So I want to uplift that work and want to uplift the work that Bob Terrell is doing in our Office of Fair Housing and Equity, who has been just a giant in this fight for many, many years. And we held a hearing that touched on some of these matters, and we have a fair housing hearing, and hopefully we'll be able to have these hearings so we can figure out how we can address these issues. Counsel Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, and I just want to thank Counselor Santana, Counselor Weber, and Counsel President Louie Jen for championing this. I've heard of multiple instances of this happening, but also we need to start at the development level in ensuring that people will meet AFFH standards. And I've heard in multiple development conversations that I've been a part of, of just sort of the lack of focus there and the lack of even mentioning, you know, fair housing practices. And so I just encourage my colleagues, and we're a part of so many conversations in our day-to-day work around development. It's important that we all be champions when we're having, when we're in those rooms of power, when we're behind closed doors, talking to people who are proposing development projects, that we also meet this and have these conversations because, and so I'm so excited to take part of this hearing and talk more about that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counsel Durkin. The chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, before I begin my comments, could I just ask the maker, I just want to make sure I heard it right. Were you saying that BHA was discriminating against voucher holders?
While Counselor Santana looks, that's not, so I'll just state that, yeah, no. Based on the lawsuit, referencing the lawsuit, it's really private landlords who are engaging in voucher discrimination based on the lawsuit and based on what I heard from Counsel Santana.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Please add my name to this. I want to also see what we can do as I represent the largest number of residents living in BHA developments, seeing what impact this has on BHA, what impact this has on tenants living in BHA, and how we address this discrimination here in the city. And maybe we have to look at the developers, maybe we have to look at the real estate people, but also let's look even closer and see if there's any discrimination at all at any city or state agency that it's also part of providing housing as well. Let's hold us accountable as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Counsel Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President, and I just want to rise to thank the maker for being so brave and calling out some of the abhorrent practices that we saw. Going through the lawsuit, seeing the evidence that was provided where folks have this voucher and they're in conversation with landlords and everything's just peachy, and they're ready to show them around the apartments, and then all of a sudden they say, hey, I have this voucher, and it just goes silent. And that in of itself is discrimination, denial is discrimination. And so trying to figure out what mechanisms we have and levers we have to hold these folks accountable through the city is going to be very important. I just wanted to call that out, and I know that Counselor Durkin mentioned AFFH, which is a really valuable tool, and that's affirmatively furthering for housing for folks that don't know. It's largely, well, it only happens through Article 80. So some of these projects that are smaller, that just go through ZBA, they're going to be market rate rent luxury units, and so everybody should have a share and have a fair shot to access these units as well, too. So again, looking forward to the conversation. Just wanted to rise to thank you and thank the sponsors.
Thank you, Counsel Coletta. Counsel Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to rise to acknowledge the question that Counsel Flynn said, and I misspoke in my, I think I just read it correctly. BHA is actually helping to identify the issues that we're seeing, so sorry for my.
Thank you. Yeah, it's people who have vouchers that need to place them on the private market that are seeing the discrimination and that we see, which is why the work of pair testing is important. Counsel Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to the maker, Counsel Santana, for your foresight. Everything housing is a wonderful way of working and focus. Quality, not quantity. I really appreciate your approach starting out today. The, and so the hearing examining or to addressing discrimination against housing choice voucher holders in Boston, of course, is crucial step toward ensuring equitable access to housing. And so I've actually seen folks that actually go through this, right? Like you have a Section 8 voucher, and the minute you show up, the realtor, well, your realtor is kind of like, you know, like keep some of this information quiet, but then when you show up, all of a sudden it's not available, or they have some other excuse why they can't show you the place, or they don't even show up if that happens on the phone. If you tell them like, hey, I got a voucher, by the way, and then they don't show up to show you the apartment, which is heartbreaking. And we have record amounts of discrimination lawsuits that actually has proven the discrimination. And of course, as you highlighted, the study with Suffolk Law School, and still this is perpetuated. So as a counselor for a district that holds like a huge amount, the most amount of affordable housing in Boston, I support you and looking forward to this conversation. We also filed something, I pulled my stuff today to refile tomorrow because of time, I mean, refile next time, next week, but we're working on something on specifically an ordinance to look at how we report back on discrimination or just equity, racial equity in housing. So would love to work with you on that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Fernandez Anderson. Counsel Flynn, you've spoken on this issue, but you'd like to speak again?
No, I would just like to make a brief comment to Counsel Santana.
You have the floor.
Counsel Santana, thank you for that response. I appreciate it. Thank you for following up on my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Coletta, Durkin, Fernandez Anderson, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Murphy, Peppin, Santana, Worrell. This docket will be referred to the Committee on Housing and Community Development. Mr. Clerk, will you please read? Counselor Fernandez Anderson has withdrawn dockets number 0416 and number 0417 for filing at a later time. Mr. Clerk, will you please read very slowly docket number 0418?
Counselor Worrell, order for a hearing to discuss long-term city job vacancies.
We are in, he's coming? The chair recognizes Counsel Orell for docket number 0418. Order for a hearing to discuss long-term city job vacancies. Counselor Worrell, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and I'd like to suspend the rules and add Counsel Fitzgerald as an original co-sponsor.
Thank you. Counsel Fitzgerald is added as an original co-sponsor. Counsel Orell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm putting forward, I'm putting forward as my office has been monitoring the job vacancies in Boston for a couple of months, in a large part because of the nearly 700 vacancies at BPS. There's an estimated 1,000 vacant jobs in the city of Boston. These vacancies are jobs that are budgeted for, and while I know part of BPS's belt tightening in fiscal year '25 is to remove some of the vacancies, I also want to bring in some of the other departments with a large amount of vacancies and see if we can advocate for higher wages that might fill these jobs or if these jobs, or if these jobs that don't need to be filled, can we use the money better elsewhere filling in a different need for the city? So this hearing order is about starting a conversation with the administration to sort through these vacancies and making sure we're compensating our employees fairly and setting competitive wages to fill these jobs and be able to provide the services for our constituents. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Fitzgerald. Counsel Fitzgerald, oh, no, okay. Counsel Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. I know that this has been a long meeting, so I'll just quickly say thank you for bringing this forward. Just doing the math, 1,000 of those jobs, did you say, that are vacant?
Yeah.
Okay, 1,000, okay. I was hoping to get the math right. With an average, hopefully, salary of $50,000, that's $50 million of worth of money, and it's just, it's a timely conversation, so I appreciate you putting this forward. I often talk about the Public Works Department, the fact that we really need, I think it's 12 bricklayers in the city of Boston. I have a lot of brick sidewalks in my district, namely in the North End, and we simply can't fill them because we're not paying enough. These folks who make more money being bricklayers elsewhere. And I know that there's work being done on this, but having a cohesive and collaborative conversation before the budget is welcome. So just thank you and looking forward to the discussion.
Thank you, Counsel Coletta. Counsel Fitzgerald, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to thank my colleague Counsel Worrell for adding me as a co-sponsor. Obviously, a lot of folks on this body have done the job of city departments. I know myself and Counsel Peppin have recently gone out to several different places and are hoping to advocate for these jobs that are open, to get them filled. And so I look forward to working with Counsel Worrell and the rest of my colleagues as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Fitzgerald. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and just want to thank the maker for calling for a hearing on this important issue. I know there's several hundred vacancies that are open and critical need for people to apply and to work to ensure that we have the quality of life, basic city services. One recommendation I would make, Madam Chair, is maybe doing a job outreach to our returning citizens as well. They're coming out of jail or they're coming out of prison. I've worked with them as a probation officer, and the most frustrating aspect of it is they don't have access to employment, full-time, steady employment. And when someone doesn't have a steady job, decent wage, with health care, they're not able to provide for themselves and their family, and the likelihood is that they could return. But what I would propose, Madam Chair, is working with young people coming out of jail or prison, give them an opportunity to work in city government. I see how hard they work. Some of them are working for public works, and there's nothing better I like doing on a Saturday is talking to these mostly young men, whether they're sweeping the streets or they're cleaning out the parks. But they still have a lot to offer. They may have made mistakes in the past, but they deserve another chance. They deserve a chance to live the American dream just like everybody else. But let's give them an opportunity to know about some of these opportunities, encourage them to apply, and to be somewhat more lenient as well. Some of them coming out of jail or prison, they automatically don't have their driver's license right away, or they don't have their birth certificate right away. Maybe we could help them with that process, getting their birth certificate, getting them back on their feet. Maybe there's an opportunity to work with Sheriff Tompkins, work with the probation department. Give people the opportunity for a job. Job is the best social program, and let's continue to work and ensure every Boston resident has the ability and access to a good-paying job. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Flynn. I want to echo what you stated and the amazing, incredible work of the Office of Returning Citizens in trying to meet the needs of our folks who are returning home from behind the wall. Last Friday, my office went out to MCI Shirley State Prison, and we really have some of our most brilliant people behind the wall who really, once home, deserve an opportunity to really thrive, and we need to make that gateway and that pathway available to them even when they're behind the wall. 70% of folks who are incarcerated are offenders, and that's because we are doing policy harm on our end by not making sure that housing is a human right, by not making sure that they have jobs. So I just want to echo that, and I do want to echo the incredible work of the Office of Returning Citizens, we're able to help double their budget, they were to give out grants to folks who are themselves leading our organizations, who are formerly incarcerated. So that is an important part of the work. I think this is a really smart filing, Counsel Orell, so I want to thank Counsel Orell, Counsel Fitzgerald for filing this, especially before the budget season as we think about the city budget. Counsel Mejia, oh, Counsel Mejia, then Counsel Weber. Counsel Mejia, you have the floor.
You go first.
Nope. Counsel Mejia, you can go. You have the floor.
Sure.
Yep.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to thank the sponsors. So I, once upon a time, was a job developer, and I worked at Goodwill. And at that moment, what I learned is that they were, you know, our job was to train women in particular who were transitioning out of welfare into jobs. And what I learned there was is that the job market, or at least those types of programs, just really wanted women to go in and work at Target or Dunkin' Donuts, which is nothing wrong with that, right? I think all those jobs are important. But when I think about the workforce here in the city of Boston in particular, I really do appreciate my colleagues' comments around, you know, public works and other departments. But for me, you know, I really want to push the envelope a little bit more. I think when we're thinking about meaningful living wages, we have to really start thinking outside of just public works. I would like to see people who are having a hard time getting into the space being provided more opportunities on the upper level. It should not just be those who have access to networks and degrees and pedigrees who get to work here in the city of Boston. I probably would not be here had it not been voted in to be here, right? And so there is a lot of work that we need to do, especially around class issues and access, and I think that people can't see themselves reflected in a government in which we're not doing more than just opening up doors and having job fairs, right? I think that this level of accountability and all of these vacancies that are open, we have to really think about why that is. Do we have a type of environment that really values people despite their resumes? And I think that that's something else, as you continue to have these conversations and host this hearing. I'd like to see our hiring practices. I'd like to see what are the mandates, because I see a lot of people running around these streets here who would be really great working here, but because they don't have that network or that, you know, access to power, they end up not being afforded the same opportunities that other folks have. So would love to work with you in making sure that we are leveling the playing field for all people. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Weber. Counsel Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to thank Counsel Worrell for this forward-thinking hearing order. Not only can it help the city provide the services that our residents need, you know, it can help us identify savings in the budget, and I look forward to being involved and advocating for our city's workforce. With that in mind, I know the resolution refers to the Ways and Means Committee, and I do recognize that it certainly has a lot to do with the budget, but as the Chair of the Labor Workforce Committee, I would like to take this on, and I think you've agreed to that, so just indicate to the Madam President that we have that agreement. So I thank you, Counsel Worrell.
That's where I believed it belonged, and so, so thank you. Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counsel President, and thank you to the makers for sponsoring this. And I did just want to uplift Judge Coffey, and it reminded me when you mentioned Counsel Flynn about the Office of Returning Citizens. We have Homeless Court at Pine Street Inn, which has been around for a long time, since 2010, but back in the 80s, it was modeled after a homeless veteran's support, where we go to, you know, places where people, and it reminds me of my hearing order, if there are kids out there who deserve jobs and want jobs, but maybe there's barriers that are stopping them from applying. So maybe she could be part of that conversation. I know she joined in in our conversation around some of the concerns, public health and public safety concerns down at Atkins Street. So she would be a wonderful source of, a resource for us as we go forward on not just taking inventory and stock of how many jobs we have open in the city, but also finding ways to connect those great jobs to people who are needing them but also very deserving of them. So thank you.
Okay. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Coletta, Durkin, Fernandez Anderson, Flynn, Mejia, Murphy, Peppin, Santana, Weber. Please add the chair. Docket number 0418 will be referred to the Committee on Labor, Workforce, and Economic Development. Mr. Clerk, can we please return to reports of committees? Yes, if you could please read dockets number 0283 to 0344.
Docket number 0283, the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, to which was referred on February 7, 2024. Docket number 0283. Document number 0283. Message in order, authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $65,000 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year 23 community mitigation awarded by the Massachusetts Gaming Commission, to be administered by the police department. The grant will fund investigations that are coordinated between the Boston Police Department Human Trafficking Unit and other law enforcement entities. submits a report recommending that the order ought to pass. Document number 0282, the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, to which was referred on February 7, 2024. Document number 0282. Message in order, authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $92,735.50 in the form of a grant for federal fiscal year 23 Emergency Management Performance Grant, awarded by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, passed through the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency, to be administered by the Office of Emergency Management. The grant will fund the enhancement of operational capacity at the Boston Emergency Operations Center and promote the professional development of OME staff. submits a report recommending that the order ought to pass. And document numbers 0344, the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, to which was referred February 14, 2024. Document number 0344. Message in order, authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $23,400 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year 24 municipal road safety, awarded by the United States Department of Transportation, passed through the Mass. Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, to be administered by the police department. The grant will fund high-visibility enforcement of motor vehicle laws, including but not limited to speeding and aggressive driving, distracted driving, impaired driving, and occupant protection. submits a report recommending that the order ought to pass.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Santana. Councilor Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice held a public hearing on dockets number 0282 to 0283, and document number 0344 on Wednesday, February 21, 2024. As chair of the committee, I want to thank the members of the Office of Emergency Management and the Boston Police Department for attending and providing the council with an extensive detail about these grants. The panelists that were in attendance were Shemane Benford, Chief of Emergency Management at the Office of Emergency Management, Andrew Bernays, Assistant Deputy Chief of Administration at the Office of Emergency Management, Maria Shevers, who's the Director of Research and Development at the Boston Police Department, Sean McCarthy, who's a lieutenant at the Boston Police Department, Area A, and Stephanie Gaines, Detective at the Boston Police Department Human Trafficking Unit. We were also, I was very happy to be joined by several of my council colleagues, starting with Councilor Murphy, Councilor Flynn, Council President Louis Jen, Council Weber, Councilor Coletta, Councilor Fitzgerald, and Councilor Wel. As chair, I share my thanks to my colleagues for a robust discussion of these grants, as well as the other important questions about the emergency management and public safety. Chief Benford discussed docket number 0282, stating that the Emergency Management Performance Grant is an annual non-competitive grant awarded to all municipalities in the Commonwealth to provide financial support for emergency management activities. Boston receives the largest share of this funding each year. The grant is administered by the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency, MEMA, and is awarded to and managed by the Office of Emergency Management, OEM. The city has consistently received this grant and requires a dollar-for-dollar cost share using operating funds for acceptance of this grant. This funding is critical for expanding service for delivery and building additional capacity and enables OEM to offer programming while freeing up vital operating funds for other key cities initiatives. OEM has used this funding to produce several goods and services in recent years, including technological upgrades to the city's Emergency Operations Center, professional development opportunities for OEM staff, facility upgrades at the EOC to ensure that, ensure the security enhancement responses to acquire critical box, trucks, and other resources to help deliver resources during the pandemic, staff uniforms, efforts for equitable and inclusive community engagement, and strengthening preparedness for the ongoing conversation around climate change and resilience. Chief Benford highlighted equity goals adopted by OEM to ensure preparedness to engage and support diverse communities, climate change, preparedness, and resiliency, and promote and sustain a ready partnership with FEMA and MEMA. He also discussed recent major incidents, including large fires in Brighton, East Boston, and Dorchester, flooding in the Back Bay in Austin, preparing a large civic events, the Edison Plant collapse, supporting migrants in Boston, the closing of dorms at the Massachusetts College of Arts, carbon monoxide leaks at the hotel in Chinatown, and a motor vehicle accident in Rosendale. Lieutenant Sean McCarthy discussed docket number 0283 and stated that the neighborhood of Charles Town has been negatively impacted by an increase in traffic due to the opening of the Encore Boston Casino, which was, which has led to an increase in motor vehicle, bicycle, and pedestrian accidents. In addition, there has been an increase in car thefts and motor vehicles. To combat the continuance of these incidents, Area A requires high visibility patrols during high-impact times. These funds will support BPD detectives who need additional time to implement strategies to combat these thefts. These strategies include surveillance, attending community meetings, and providing additional hours to investigate crimes. Detective Gaines discussed BPD's Human Trafficking Unit, stating the unit investigates criminal enterprises that profit from the sexual exploitation of vulnerable persons, identifies who drives the sex trade, and factors that increase demand for these activities, and follows up on the referrals that come into the unit by family members and service providers who identify people who may be exploited and used for sex trade. She stated that this grant will provide support to the Human Trafficking Unit to perform joint surveillance activities with other law enforcement agencies to help protect the casino staff and patrons, implement buyer demand deterrence, and other enforcement and investigation duties. Ms. Shevers discussed, Ms. Shevers discussed docket number 0344 and stated that this is an annual grant from the Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, and it's called the Municipal Road Safety Grant. This one, it will go to three areas, including $9,360 to be used for overtime costs associated with traffic mobilizations, $9,360 for pedestrian and bicycle, bicycle safety mobilization, and the remaining $4,680 will be used to purchase two-liter speed devices to determine the speed of drivers. As chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, I recommend moving the listed dockets from the committee to the full council for discussion and formal action. At the time, my recommendations to the full council will be that these matters ought to pass. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice seeks acceptance of the committee reports and adoption of dockets number 0283, 0282, and 0344. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay?
Yeah, Madam Chair. Can we do a roll call vote on those? Please?
Sure, we can do a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk, please do a roll call vote on docket number 0283.
Roll call vote on docket number 0283. Counselor Braden. Counselor Coletta. Counselor Coletta, yes. Counselor Durkin. Counselor Durkin, yes. Counselor Fernandez Anderson. Counselor Fernandez Anderson, yes. Counselor Fitzgerald. Counselor Fitzgerald, yes. Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Louie Jen.
Yes.
Counselor Louie Jen, yes. Counselor Mehea. Counselor Murphy. Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor Peppin. Counselor Peppin, yes. Counselor Santana.
Yes.
Counsel Santana, yes. Counselor Wel.
Yes.
Yes, sorry. Counsel Weber.
Yes.
Counsel Weber, yes. Document number 0283 has received 11 votes in the affirmative.
Mr. Clerk, please do a roll call vote for docket number 0282.
Roll call vote on docket number 0282. Counselor Braden. Counselor Coletta. Counselor Coletta, yes. Counselor Durkin. Counselor Durkin, yes. Counselor Fernandez Anderson. Counselor Fernandez Anderson, yes. Counselor Fitzgerald. Counselor Fitzgerald, yes. Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Louie Jen.
Yes.
Counsel Louie Jen, yes. Counsel Mehea. Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel Peppin. Counsel Peppin, yes. Counsel Santana.
Yes.
Counsel Santana, yes. Counsel Weber.
Yes.
Counsel Weber, yes. And Counsel Wel.
Yes.
Counsel Wel, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, please do a roll call vote on docket number 0344.
Document number 0344. Counselor Braden. Counselor Coletta. Counselor Coletta, yes. Counsel Durkin. Counsel Durkin, yes. Counsel Fernandez Anderson. Counsel Fernandez Anderson, yes. Counsel Fitzgerald. Counsel Fitzgerald, yes. Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Louie Jen.
Yes.
Counsel Louie Jen, yes. Counsel Mehea. Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel Peppin. Counsel Peppin, yes. Counsel Santana.
Yes.
Counsel Santana, yes. Counsel Weber.
Yes.
Counsel Weber, yes. And Counsel Wel.
Yes.
Counsel Wel, yes. Document number 0344 has received 11 votes in the affirmative.
Thank you. Dockets number 0283, dockets number 0282, and 0344 have been adopted and have passed. The chair recognizes Counselor Santana. Counsel Santana, you have the floor.
Madam President, thank you. I would like to make a motion to reconsider dockets number 0387 through 0390.
Thank you. Is that motion seconded?
Seconded.
Thank you, Counsel Santana. Motion is, you may go forward.
Thank you, Madam President. As chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, with the president's permission, of course, I'd like to speak briefly on all four of these docket type ones and then move for a vote on each individually.
You may so proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. Docket number 0387 is the fiscal year of 2024 firefighter safety equipment grant in the amount of $37,293.99. The grant is funded by the Massachusetts Department of Fire Services. This grant provides the Boston Fire Department with the funds to purchase firefighter safety equipment. The city of Boston receives a grant like this each year. Given the importance of safety equipment for our Boston firefighters, I will be asking for passage of this docket today. Docket number 0388 is a $20,000 grant for the Boston Police Department. The grant is funded by the Simone Foundation. This grant supports the work of the Boston Police Department homicide unit. The city of Boston has received a similar grant in past years. This council body suspended the rules and passed this grant in 2023. This body did so as well in 2022. I don't believe the city received the grant in 2021, but the city did receive one in 2020. And this body suspended the rules and passed this grant in 2020 as well. Given this is the grant, this body has suspended and passed several times, we ask that we do the same today to support our Boston homicide unit. Docket number 0389 is a grant in the amount of $11,330 for the fire department. It is funded through the fiscal year 2023 Coverdale Formula Grant awarded by the United States Department of Justice. This grant will be, this grant will fund preparation and the application process for the laboratory accreditation. The city of Boston has received a similar grant in the past years. Given the small dollar amount and in the interest of efficiency with the taxpayer dollars, I will be asking that we pass this grant today to support our Boston Fire Department's laboratory accreditation. Docket number 0390 is a, is an $8,000 grant awarded by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. This grant funds data collection by the Boston Police Department Bureau of Investigation Services and the Drug Control Unit. The city of Boston has received a similar grant in the years past, including in 2022, 2021, and in 2020. This body voted to suspend the rules and adopt the grant in each year. I ask the body that we do the same today. Madam President, at this time, I would like that we suspend the rules and adopt each dockets of number, dockets number 0387 through 0390. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Counselor Santana. The chair seeks suspension of the rules for docket number 0387 and passage of that docket. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay?
Go ahead, the vote.
Mr. Clerk, can you please do a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket number 0387. Counsel Braden. Counsel Coletta. Counsel Braden. Counsel Durkin. Counsel Durkin, yes. Counsel Fernandez Anderson. Counsel Fernandez Anderson, yes. Counsel Fitzgerald. Counsel Fitzgerald, yes. Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Louie Jen.
Yes.
Counsel Louie Jen, yes. Counsel Mehea. Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel Peppin. Counsel Peppin, yes. Counsel Santana.
Yes.
Counsel Santana, yes. Counsel Weber.
Yes.
Counsel Weber, yes. And Counsel Wel.
Yes.
Counsel Wel, yes. And Counsel Coletta. Counsel Coletta, yes. Docket number 0387 has received 11 votes in the affirmative.
Thank you. Docket number 0387 has passed. The chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket number 0388. Mr. Clerk, can we please do a roll call vote on docket number 0388?
Counsel Braden. Counsel Coletta. Counsel Coletta, yes. Counsel Durkin. Counsel Durkin, yes. Counsel Fernandez Anderson. Counsel Fernandez Anderson, yes. Counsel Fitzgerald. Counsel Fitzgerald, yes. Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Louie Jen.
Yes.
Counsel Louie Jen, yes. Counsel Mehea. Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel Peppin. Counsel Peppin, yes. Counsel Santana.
Yes.
Counsel Santana, yes. Counsel Weber.
Yes.
Counsel Weber, yes. And Counsel Wel.
Yes.
Counsel Wel, yes. Docket number 0388 has received 11 votes in the affirmative.
Thank you. This docket has been adopted and passed. Can we, Mr. Clerk, the chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket number 0389. Can you please do a roll call vote?
Counsel Braden. Counsel Coletta. Counsel Coletta, yes. Counsel Durkin. Counsel Durkin, yes. Counsel Fernandez Anderson. Counsel Fernandez Anderson, yes. Counsel Fitzgerald. Counsel Fitzgerald, yes. Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Louie Jen.
Yes.
Counsel Louie Jen, yes. Counsel Mehea. Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel Peppin. Counsel Peppin, yes. Counsel Santana. Counsel Santana, yes. Counsel Weber. Counsel Weber, yes. And Counsel Wel. Counsel Wel, yes. Docket number 0389 has received 11 votes in the affirmative.
Thank you. Docket number 0389 has been adopted and has passed. Mr. Clerk, can you please, Mr. Clerk, Counsel Santana seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket number 0390. Can you please do a roll call vote?
Counsel Braden. Counsel Coletta. Counsel Coletta, yes. Counsel Durkin. Counsel Durkin, yes. Counsel Fernandez Anderson. Counsel Fernandez Anderson, yes. Counsel Fitzgerald. Counsel Fitzgerald, yes. Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Louie Jen.
Yes.
Counsel Louie Jen, yes. Counsel Mehea. Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel Peppin. Counsel Peppin, yes. Counsel Santana. Counsel Santana, yes.
Yes.
Counsel Santana, yes. Counsel Weber.
Yes.
Counsel Weber, yes. And Counsel Orell.
Yes.
Counsel Orell, yes. Document number 0390 has received 11 votes in the affirmative.
Thank you. This docket has been adopted and passed. We are now moving on to personnel orders. Mr. Clerk, would you please read the personnel orders?
Document number 0419, Counsel Louie Jen for Counselor Santana, personnel order. Document number 0420, Counsel Louie Jen for Counselor Murphy, personnel order. And document number 0421, Counsel Louie Jen for Counselor Weber, personnel order.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? Thank you, the personnel orders have passed. We are now moving on to green sheets. Is anyone looking to pull anything from the green sheets? No? Okay. We are now moving on to late files. I'm informed by the clerk that there are two late file matters. Both are late file, both are personnel orders. We will take a vote to add these matters to the agenda. All those in favor of adding the late file matters, say aye? All opposed, say nay? Thank you, the late file matters have been added to the agenda. Mr. Clerk, please read the first late file matter into the record.